We used to have a really good lighting system here. Here we go. There you go. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Edina City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 2, 2019. Roll call, please. Ms. Allison?
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. I'll take the chair job.
There, I'm sorry.
We're thinking we have an HRE meeting here. Mixed meeting, that's all right. Just threw me off momentarily. We've got a meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to modify the agenda? Manager Neil, any changes on the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, just one small change, but an important change. On item 7A, in the public hearing section, just to note that the motion approving, if there is a motion to approve the 50th and France Small Area Plan, will have to be a two-thirds majority instead of a simple majority because it is a comp plan change.
Okay. All right. Very good. With that change having been noted, which doesn't deal with the items on the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as shown?
Someone?
Second?
Is there a second? We had a motion, a second, to adopt the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Next, community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? And, young ladies, welcome. I think I saw something in our packet that said you were going to be here to talk about some things that were environmental related, so welcome. I'm going to have you introduce yourselves, and then we'll have a little conversation about what you've got to talk to the council about.
Hello, Mayor Hovland and City Council members. I want to thank you for your time tonight. My name is Anna Martinez, and I live in 6216 Lockmore Drive. I'm a freshman at Edina High School, and I'm a climate reality leader trained as a part of former Vice President Al Gore's Climate Initiative. And I'm here today because I'm truly concerned about the huge threat that climate imposes on everything and everyone I care about. I'm currently a part of Project Earth and the Environmental Club at the school, and for the past few months, we have been participating in a nationwide high school campaign coordinated by I Matter and Sunrise Movement, two nonprofit organizations working to empower youth across the country to become climate activists in their community. The goal of this campaign is to mobilize our community to confront the urgency of the climate crisis and to build political will within our local government to support a large action like a Green New Deal. Before going on, we just want to say that we applaud Edina for the steps it has already taken towards reducing our climate impact, especially with the bold goals in its new comprehensive plan. Today, we are representing 115 residents who signed their petition along with the endorsement of Minnesota 350, a statewide organization working to fight climate change. We are here to urge you to create and pass a comprehensive climate action plan for Edina and to sign a resolution endorsing legislation for a federal and state Green New Deal. Last February, U.S. Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and Senator Ed Markey introduced a resolution to Congress which stated that it is the duty of the federal government to create a Green New Deal. Noted after President Roosevelt's New Deal, this Green New Deal asks the government to take the actions necessary to address a national crisis. Once completed, the Green New Deal will be a detailed action plan to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 through a transition to 100% clean energy. To do this, we will create millions of good-paying jobs in the growing green sector while securing cleaner food and water for everyone and making sure that all marginalized and frontline communities are included in this transition. I know that this is an ambitious resolution, and I know that it isn't perfect, but I'm sure you'll agree with me when I say that climate change has to be brought to the forefront of the conversation, and this bill has done a remarkable job at doing so. For this reason, I believe that this bill can lay a great foundation for a more detailed and achievable Green New Deal to be designed by Congress. By endorsing this resolution, Edina will keep the issue in the forefront of Congress' focus as well as take our city's claim as climate leaders.
Hi, I'm Maddie Fernandez. I am the National Communications Director for the U.S. Youth Climate Strike. I'm also one of the lead organizers of Minnesota Can't Wait, which is an environmental organization that is focused on getting Minnesota to 100% renewable by 2030, of many other things. There are other things as well. I live at 6905 West Shore Drive, Edina, Minnesota. So, based on what Anna just said, the reason why we have a timeline of 11 years and the reason why we are so bold is because, according to the U.N.'s Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report that was released in October 2018, we only have 11 years left to evade the worst consequences of climate change, which include mass destruction worldwide. And so, to have an immense mobilization that gets us to 100% renewable by 2030, which is what is necessary to evade this immense crisis, we have to personally take action in both Edina, Minnesota, and also in the federal government. And so, in Edina, the Climate Action Plan is the most viable step that we can take as a city to get to 100% by 2030. And we have already, this has already been in the works for multiple years. We've already presented in front of city council about the Climate Action Plan. However, the urgency is not there, and that is something that is very inherently flawed in this current state of climate crisis. And so, we urge the city council to continue to pressure the Energy and Environment Commission, which I am a member of, to urgently create a climate action plan that has concrete steps to get to 100% renewable by 2030, which is what is necessary in Edina, because that is something that we, as, and you as council members, can do, and that is something that we have already been looking into, but the urgency needs to be there. There needs to be pressure on the commission. Additionally, in Minnesota, we have drafted a bill called the Minnesota Green New Deal, which aims to get to 100% renewable in Minnesota by 2030, but instead of being a resolution like the federal resolution, it is an actual bill that is going to be introduced, I think, maybe next week or something, sometime similar to then. And we have Representative Hornstein from District 61A, I believe, who is the champion of that bill. And in that bill, to get to 100% in Minnesota, we have multiple steps that we take. We have a strict regulation on new fossil fuel infrastructure. We create an office for the transition of the Green New Deal that makes sure that has like equity as a priority underneath the governor, and that office would have a panel that is, or at least a board that is, has community members that are involved on it, as well as many other steps that we're going to take to make sure that green technology and all of that is prioritized in Minnesota and so that this transition can be an equitable one as well as a profitable one for Minnesota.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Hello, Mayor Hovland and City Council members. My name is Katherine Kaiser, and I'm 15 years old. I live at 5017 Skyline Drive, yeah, Edina, Minnesota. Ever since I can remember, I've been worried about climate change. I know you share my concern, as Edina City Council has made climate a main focus, and you, Mayor Hovland, are on the Climate Mayor Coalition. You recognize the urgency of climate change, and so I thank you all for the action you've taken to protect future generations. Supporting this bill is the next step in that journey. I still can't vote, but that's why I'm here, to be heard. Thank you for this opportunity. I've lived in Edina all my life, and I've always enjoyed the nature here. I frequently see deer, coyotes, turkeys, and other amazing wildlife in my own backyard. We even have chickens and had bees last year. When I go to the parks or when I go outside at all, I'm always reminded of the beauty, the peace, and the comfort of nature. The trees, wind, and sky would be with me no matter how old I am, where I am, or who I am. That naive vision was dashed when I visited Alaska and realized nature was dying because we're killing it. I saw several 100-feet-tall chunks of glacier break off. This natural melting that should be incredibly rare and only happen once in a lifetime is happening so frequently that for the one-hour period I was there, I saw several break. That's what made me realize we need to start fixing what we've done to our environment. I don't want my future to be one where nature hurts us more than it helps us. Climate change will not solely hurt coastal regions. It'll hurt Minnesota as well. Our report by the U.N.'s Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change states we have 11 years before this becomes catastrophic. For Minnesota, that will mean frequent flooding, more extreme weather, and hotter summers. According to Climate Nexus's report on the climate impacts along the Mississippi River, we can expect extreme flooding, droughts, and temperature swings. We have already seen these effects, as five of Minnesota's largest rainfalls ever recorded have occurred within the last 20 years. Our infrastructure simply isn't up to the task. Winters like this past one will become more typical. Flooded basements and soggy ceilings can be expected. The Green New Deal is the most aggressive and all-encompassing plan we currently have for climate action. It is what needs to happen to prevent disaster. I'm calling upon you, on behalf of the youth of Edina, to support the Green New Deal and create a climate action plan. Edina's endorsement, along with that of 65 cities already in support, would send a powerful message to the federal government showing local political will and widespread public support for a Green New Deal. Since change starts at the local level, and to protect the, change starts at the local level, and to protect the future, we need to change. Minnesota and Edina can become leaders in fixing this worldwide crisis. So I urge you to take action by endorsing this resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Fernandez, and Ms. Martinez, do you have a copy of a resolution with you? And do you have
Yes.
...a recommendation on a climate action plan? Because we're working on one right now. I think Ms. Fernandez knows that, that we're trying to get to a certain level of clean energy by 2030, 2035. We've got our sustainability coordinator here that could speak to those efforts, but this is going to have to go to, back to you, Ms. Fernandez, and the Energy and Environment Commission, and you're a great advocate, and I think you're going to have to talk to them, because they'll be bringing things to us. And we want to make sure that we're doing something, and we are, and we're leading the state of Minnesota in many areas with the first community solar garden in our state in Edina, with the first property-assessed clean energy building in the state down at 70th and Cahill. But we know that it's not enough, and we're pressing to do more because we think that there is wisdom in what you say about acting locally to kind of push the energy up when it's not, the leadership, leadership on this issue isn't coming from the top, it's got to come from the ground. And we're prepared to be part of that, but we need to also do things that are realistically achievable in our community. And you'll see tonight on our agenda, something that deals with improving the energy efficiency is this particular building. So we're working on a steady plan to get ourselves to a great position. I may bring our sustainability coordinator up here just briefly. Ms. Brown, would you, you want to come up? So just so you can tell folks what the city's working on in terms of trying to achieve a certain level of clean energy by a certain date, when, do you have that information in your head?
Yeah. So the city has committed to the State's Next Generation Energy Act, which is a 25% reduction by, 30% reduction by 2025, and 80% reduction by 2050. We know through our electricity action plan, given that it was three years ago, the energy was our biggest greenhouse gas emissions, we started with an energy action plan. We know that city operations make up 5% of the energy consumed in the city itself. The rest is by the community, and we've looked at ways to help educate as well as then go ahead and commit to ways that we are reducing our energy within that 5%. The second thing that creates the greenhouse gas emissions is the transportation. That has now become the first in the state. It was already nationally number one. We are working on fleet reduction as well as education around EV. Additionally, the work plan items that we do have are committing to things that, when you look at any other climate action plan, are doing. We're working on an energy benchmarking ordinance to help businesses understand what their energy use is so they have the data to take action. We are working on a green building policy to ensure that we can give direction when PUD rezoning comes, that we can help them be more energy efficient. So while we haven't paused on the action to do more planning, right now, we're focused on the action that we result in the greenhouse gas emission reduction.
All right, good. Thanks for that good report out. So, ladies, would you come back up to the microphone, please? I really laud and applaud all three of you for being concerned about this issue, which I think is probably one of the most important issues of our time. We want to make sure that you live in the kind of world all of us had the chance to grow up in as well. So if you leave what you want us to think about with the clerk, we'll get it to the Energy and Environment Commission, and we'll have them look at it first. And if we can push ourselves a little bit harder beyond the goals that Ms. Brown talked about, we'll try to do that. We'll try to think of ways to do that, but it's difficult. When we make a promise, we want to make sure that we can honor the promise too. So, Ms. Kaiser?
Would you consider endorsing the Green New Deal?
Well, we won't do that until we see what the language of the Green New Deal is, and then we send it to the Energy and Environment Commission to get their advisory opinion on it. So I don't know what the timing is on all of this, but the council won't do anything with it. You know, I can't sit here tonight and tell you, yeah, we're going to endorse, endorse, or this council's going to endorse the Green New Deal, because we don't know what the language of that is like, and we'd probably want our Energy and Environment Commission to look at it first.
Just, I wanted to say, I heard what you say about like having realistic expectations of what we can do. And I just, like, there's many people, many critics who have said that the Green New Deal is unrealistic, and that's why we just want to say that this could be like a great foundation for like creating a more achievable Green New Deal, but we do need a Green New Deal. We need to take these actions.
Yeah. Well, let's look at this, the Green New Deal, and see if we like it, and maybe we'll like a different kind of Green New Deal that we create.
I just wanted to add additionally. So the current goals that we have as a city are not enough, and that's based on science and what has been reiterated many, many times by client, climate scientists. We cannot continue to get bogged down in the bureaucratic processes that have led us into, have led us into this crisis. And I think that when we kind of go back into that mindset when dealing with an issue of this caliber, we're not correctly addressing this issue. We're not correctly having a mobilization that is going to help us evade the worst effects of climate change. So I urge you, and we urge you today, to know that when we continue to just say incremental change, incremental change, that will never be enough, and that in this issue, in this crisis, that will not be enough, because we need a level of mobilization that has been seen before, after the Great Depression, in the era of the New Deal. We need that to solve this climate crisis. We don't need incremental change, because this is a crisis that will affect people on the front lines of this issue much, much more than, you know, privileged and wealthier folks in Edina, and we need to be pushing for, you know, solutions, because we're the ones in the U.S. who are creating this crisis, and we should be trying to fix it as well.
Yeah. I think, okay. Thank you for that passion and the articulate expression of what you think we ought to be doing here in terms of transformational change versus incremental change. And certainly, I think, we think we're more towards the transformational end than the incremental end, but nonetheless, understand your concern. So let us have what you, what you have prepared so that we can, we can study it.
Yeah.
We have it? Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for coming tonight. All right. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them
My name is, let's see, is this working?
It is, Mr. Lorenz.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Frank Lorenz. I live at 7151 York Avenue South in Edina. I want to talk a little bit about the city's efforts to enable or develop affordable housing. This is primarily directed at apartments rather than individual freestanding homes, but in any event, basically, you have been and continue to use the wrong numbers, which means that you're getting strange results, wrong results. The median household income, as most of the high school students behind me probably already know, is that number between a complete array of the least income that anyone earns who lives in Edina and the most. And that's a huge range. It probably goes from under $10,000 a year for people that are in nursing homes all the way up to more than $10 million a year for some of the very wealthy people that live in mansions in Edina. But in any event, it's that number absolutely in the middle of the array. And that number, that household income number, comes from what is normally a two-adult family. They may or may not have children in the household, but the income is normally two working adults. Now, Edina continues to use the Hennepin County median household income from either the year 2016 or 17, which is $91,000. But in fact, the actual median household income in Edina is much higher than that. It's at least $125,000 to $130,000, and you may be able to get that, but you'll have to pay a consultant to dig it out for you. But it is clear from the average value of the houses that people are living in and the apartments that they're living in that $91,000 is the wrong number. That's important, because you then go to the goal of saying, we want to assist or force developers to produce a certain percentage of their new units, new residences, as being affordable. And you're not using the 30% affordability, which is what HUD and other affordable housing advocates use. You're using something that's called the workforce affordable housing number, which is 60% of gross income, and you don't want rents to be greater than that. But if you're using numbers that are too low, you end up tasking the builders to produce a certain percentage of residences that are at an income level so low that they can't build the building without raising the number of units in it or cheapening the materials or both. And I see I'm out of time, so I'll
Thank you.
Send you a copy of this.
Yes, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to go to the next portion of the agenda, which is the city manager's response to community comments that were made two weeks ago. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had one comment at our last meeting on March 19. That was a comment regarding the composition of the 50th and France Small Area Plan. There was a concern, the plan, the Small Area Group that was putting that plan together. The concern was that that group had not been entirely open to the public. I think we'll, you'll hear evidence tonight that it was. And there was also a concern expressed that that group was responding too much to corporate interests, I think, in the 50th and France area. I think you'll also hear that that may not be universally agreed to as well. So those were the, that was the one comment, and that was the content of it.
Okay. That prompt any response from council members or any reason for inquiry? All right. Thank you, Manager Neil. Next, we have the consent agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone, anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Member Brindle?
I would like, I would like to remove 5G, please.
5G?
Yes.
All right. Member Staunton?
5L and O.
All right. And I'm going to remove 5F. With the exception of 5F, G, L, and O, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Someone?
Second?
Got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of 5F, G, L, and O. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? I'm up first on 5F, which is a request for purchase Arden Park playground equipment replacement. Doing some wonderful work down there. I was down there on Sunday. The remeander is just doing a beautiful job of handling water through the creek, and it's just going to be a fantastic addition to our community when that park is done into the neighborhood. We've got a request tonight from staff to purchase playground equipment. That would be replacement equipment for what's down there. And my question is, and I guess my concern is, we put playground equipment, new playground equipment, in Roslyn Park that's completely accessible. It's the only completely accessible park we have in town, and it's just been really enjoyed by folks, not only from our community, but other communities that have kids that are, that want to participate and use playground equipment but have physical challenges. And so, when I, when I go, when I walk through Roslyn Park and I see all the kids using that facility, I think this is just fantastic. So there we've got one on the south side, and this seems to me like a great opportunity to have that same kind of equipment on the north side of town. It's really more the center of town, but it gives folks a little bit more ability to get, you know, Arden Park that maybe love, live up in Morningside or live in even west Minneapolis to come down and use the facility. So I'm wondering, as we're thinking about replacing this equipment at Arden Park, why aren't we thinking about a totally, totally accessible park situation? Thank you. Excuse me.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. We did initially consider that option. There's a couple of factors to consider, one being cost. The cost to build that type of playground is much more expensive than other playgrounds. This is an ADA-accessible playground. It will accommodate people of different abilities to use the playground. We, most communities have maybe one totally inclusive playground, so we felt like the larger playground that we have at Roslyn Park would serve our community.
Manager Neil, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say the same. There was a lot of public engagement, both with the neighbors and also with the group that's been kind of working around this park. And we do have the one, which is fairly typical in terms of a kind of a zero-barriers-style park. We just don't have sufficient funding in our, in our capital improvement program to fund all parks in our system to be that, that barrier-free park. And as Ms. Foss noted, it will comply with all ADA requirements for a park.
Okay. That prompt any other questions from council members? Member Anderson?
Thank you. Just a question. What's the difference in pricing? We're at 117 here, I see. What's the difference in fully accessible equipment?
I don't have an exact, an exact estimate for you. I wouldn't say that it would double the cost, but it would probably add at least another, I don't even want to actually, I can look into it. It would be based on the actual size of the playground and the different types of play features, but you add a lot of ramping, and that would add an additional cost. So I can look into that, and I can get more of a specific number for you.
So is there some urgency to this? I mean, to the point raised by Member Anderson, which I was also going to raise, was what's the cost differential, so that we, we know how to compare one versus the other? Is there some urgency to acting on this tonight, or can we lay it over for two weeks?
We could wait two weeks. We do, would want to place the order for the equipment by June so that we can have it delivered by September, so it can be installed by the end of the year.
All right. So I think Member Anderson's indicated his interest in knowing what the cost differential is. I have that same interest, because I think council would be benefited by knowing what the differential is, so he can give us some good thought.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to lay over 5F to our next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Now we're on to 5G. Member Brindle?
5G, thank you. So, but, here I go. All right, I'm on. 5G is an item on the consent agenda that I don't want to argue about. I took it off so we could actually talk about it. This is the Tranquility Garden at Arnison Park. It is a project of the Edina Garden Council, and I want to just give credit to this group of hardy volunteers who, right now, are busy planting seeds and planting the gardens around Edina's parks and the beautification that we have throughout the city throughout the summer. They are responsible for that. So I didn't want to just have this be a consent agenda vote without crediting the work of hundreds of people. And the Tranquility Garden is a garden within Arnison Park. If you know where the gazebo is, you would basically walk straight south of that into the park, and there's a variety of plantings that are there now. And the Tranquility Garden that is being designed is in an effort to kind of organize what's there and show it off a little bit more, make what's there and show it off a little bit more, make some spaces for additional plantings as the, as the garden grows. Many of these plantings in the Tranquility Garden are memorials of people who have belonged to the Garden Council in the past, or they are people who have lived in Edina in the past. And, or there are people who live in Edina today and want recognition in that park. So I will move this issue. It's a wonderful project and being taken on by wonderful people.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving 5G, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried?
And I see Betty Workinger here, and two other people who I suspect are in Garden Council as well. So thank you very much for your efforts. And you have a plant sale coming up, right?
Yes. This is a brochure you're all going to get later.
All right. It's, it's the Thursday and Friday before Mother's Day. You can mark that on your calendar.
I plan on making my donations over there to help with this. And I think it's worth noting that this is a project, it's a $47,000 price tag, and it is being paid for by the Garden Council. So it's really a tremendous, tremendously generous gift on their part. Plus, don't miss that flower sale, it's the best. All right, we're on to 5L, which is the Morningside Neighborhood Flood Risk Reduction Strategy Scope Development. Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council knows, this was an item that we had on our, our work session agenda recently to talk about how we go about implementing an item in our 2019 CIP that has to do with flood risk reduction. We have been studying stormwater for quite some time and trying to figure out the right approaches to it. And what I, I really took this off because I'd like to just provide a little more meat on the bones, if you will, on the plans that we have going forward. I know this is an item in the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan. And what I want to make sure is that there's, there's a feel to this, and I don't want people to misunderstand it, that we are kind of referring this to some kind of blue-ribbon commission to talk about it some more. There's a real specifics to it. And I wonder if Director Milner might be able to kind of give us a little bit of a sense of, of both what we're planning to do in terms of the community engagement and the array of tools that we want to try out in this pilot program, as well as what timeline we roughly expect to be at when we're starting to actually make something happen.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Staunton. Yeah, this was a work session, work session item. The purpose of this document here is to summarize what we heard from, from the council that night. So we wanted to make sure we heard everything, and that it's documented, and you guys can make changes to it. It's focusing on kind of three areas. First, the technical side. We have some ideas of what to do with just adding pipes and tanks and stuff like that. We want to get a better handle on the technical side, working with St. Louis Park and Minneapolis to get our stormwater models talking to each other, make sure we truly understand what flood levels we're talking about. The second piece we want to better understand is land use. What happens if we create impervious limits? What does that do from stormwater? Get our hands around that. And then the third is, what are people willing to do on their own property? So once we kind of have a understanding of those first two points with land use and the technical side, then we want to go out to the public and start to have a conversation of these benefits, that what do the people value? Are they willing to give up 100 trees to have a tank cold stormwater? Or are they willing to do less on their property to help the resident on the downhill side of a drainage area? Really have that cost-benefit discussion when we have a better understanding. So the first, first thing we want to do is put together a technical panel of experts in the fields of engineering, economics, water resources, and social sciences. See what they've done in the field in this metro area, if not statewide. And then also, at the same time, put together a task force of people that live in Edina that can help share the story citywide, because we not only want to do it in Morningside as a test case, but build that capacity citywide. So we're just looking at summarizing those technical possibilities, looking at the trade-offs, and what does the community value, and have the discussion. So the timeline is a 2019 work plan. Until we get these panels together, I don't have a better timeline at that point, but the hope is, by the end of the year, council and staff, and we have a discussion, and we can lay out some plans for the street recons that are happening three or four years out in the Morningside, and then also start to look at some of those ideas and maybe apply those in other neighborhoods with Edina.
So would there, would we be looking to have a plan sketched out by the end of the year? Are you talking about taking some steps at the end of the year to implement a pilot program?
So we know implementations this year. This is strictly getting a plan ready for those street recons in '22 and '23 in the Morningside.
So the pilots would, the pilot in Morningside is, in essence, would be taking this array of tools that we have, trying to figure out both from our technical experts as well as our community what the right mix of those tools is.
Correct.
And then implement it as a first try in a Morningside, in that Morningside neighborhood where we've targeted.
Yes, and potentially if we develop a concept or a great plan, maybe we can implement some of those sooner in neighborhoods we're reconstructing in '21 or '20, you know.
And so when is the, when is that particular neighborhood in Morningside anticipated to be on the, when would something happen in that neighborhood?
Yep, I believe it's on the five-year reconstruction plan for '22 and '23, two different segments, so then we can overlap. That was our hope, to do the study this year and have a better understanding of those trade-offs, because then we got to factor in costs. We haven't even talked about the financial impacts of this. But then we'd have two years to plan and potentially implement some of these with the street recon, because that's our best opportunity to implement big changes like this.
Well, it feels, it feels longer than I'd like to see. I'd like to see us doing something sooner than that. I appreciate the, the planning aspect of it. You want to measure twice and cut once, but it feels like we've been at it a long time, and I'm not sure there's anything that I can do about moving that faster, but, but I'm anxious to, to get a project that we can measure results on sooner rather than later.
Member Fisher?
I would just add, you know, there, we have gotten some feedback from folks in Morningside that, you know, would suggest that we've, in the planning that we've done so far, there are ideas out there for things to implement. And if there are things that we could do in a shorter term, I get, you know, if it impacts under a street, we can't just rip up our streets and then three years later come back and do a street project. But if there are other things that, when you get this task force put together, if there can be suggestions for shorter-term, you know, projects that we can move forward. And then the other component that, that I didn't see in here, as you have that group together, I still would like to see ordinance, potential ordinance changes for what we call the top-of-the-hill development. And if, if this process you're about to go through can actually help initiate those potential changes that come to the council, I think that would be a really good outcome as well.
Yeah, I think that goes to the land use. So it's on the Planning Commission's work plan for this year to look at that. We want to partner with them, and then that, I feel, would come back as an, as an ordinance or a code change.
Yep, thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, you know, I'm a bottom-of-the-hill guy, and so I, what we know is that the 100-year rain has risen two inches. That's a big factor. It's also happening with greater frequency. So stormwater mitigation has to be a big concern of this group and certainly of you in the very near future. And I think I just want to reflect member Staunton's sense of urgency about it, only because it, this is pressing. It becomes more and more pressing all the time. It's an easy thing to overlook and forget about until you're bailing out your basement or until your neighborhood's flooding, or we have decomposition in streets and water that's into front yards after a heavy rain. And we're just seeing more and more of it. So just wanted to reiterate. Thank you.
This goes to the heart of what I think Ms. Martinez, Ms. Fernandez, and Ms. Kaiser were talking about, is that our changing climate is causing us to have some challenges that we never had as a city before, and one of them is how to manage, you know, stormwater more effectively. And so when we had the work session, and we talked about Morningside, which is very susceptible, based on its topography, to flooding, one of the topics we talked about was being able to not only handle the water and move it different places, but also being able to store it different places. And so following that meeting, one of our residents who lives in Morningside, who's in the construction business, came over to my house and delivered an eight-and-a-half-by-14-inch document that shows every place in Morningside where there is existing storage capacity on private property and where there could be storage on private property in future. Plus, also, we talked about what's the, what's the future use for the city of Edina for the property we purchased at Weber Park, some of which is, is very depressed, in a low, boggy area. It seems to me that while we could work on the street issue and understand well what you're talking about, and member Fisher made the point, we're not going to go tearing up streets, but in tandem, it seems like we could be looking at some of these other issues that could, we could, we could maybe address sequentially, address quicker, and then take the streets as they come. But we come up with an overall plan that gives us an ability to manage it, direct it, store it in different places, and why not start having some of these conversations with private property owners that have the capacity to store water in some locations, or at least looking at it to see if that's a, if that's a viable possibility? And then also looking in advance, you know, we've been trying to figure out, well, what's the future of Weber Park? I think we should be looking at that. I don't see any reason why we couldn't be looking at that simultaneously with what you're talking about doing in terms of planning for street reconstruction and possible improvements underneath the streets of, up in Morningside over a three- or four-year period of time.
Well, I think I'll clarify, this, what you received tonight in this plan, is not just the streets. It's this entire area. It's those backyards, it's Weber Park, it's the park itself, it's property that's outside in St. Louis Park and potentially property in Minneapolis. And all of it talks together. Water flows through all of it. So we can't just do one without knowing how it impacts the next one, and the next one, and the next one. It's all, all rolls downstream. So this draft document in front of you is looking at the entire area and looking at all those areas, too. So to make some improvements, just the one, we really don't know the impact of what the solution might be downstream. So we are considering all those areas with this study in 2019.
All right. Well, that's, that's my point, is that this should be looked at on a broad basis.
Yep.
And it seems to me that if we look at it and study it in 2019, I'm not suggesting one-off fixes, because I don't think that makes any sense. And, and of course, it, it doesn't seem to me to be improbable that we could figure out how to manage water in 2019 for the future. But once we get past 2019, why do we have to wait until 2023 to start working on the project? Might there be some other things that we can do in advance? That's the point some of the council members are making.
And I'd say there probably will be when we understand those areas. Maybe there's a smaller stormwater project in those backyards or in the park that could start to set us up to tie into the street recon coming in the future. So yes, I think there's potential opportunities to do some of those sooner. The really big opportunity is with the street recon, so.
All right. Okay. Does that prompt any else?
I mean, I just think this, you know, I think we want to send the message that there's an urgency here, and, and I know that you know that, but it's, it's hard for folks who are knee-deep in it to be waiting for the next study to be done. So anything we can do to move this faster would be a good thing. So, thank you. I'd move this item.
Move the matter. All right. We got a motion on 5L. We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the report involving the Morningside Neighborhood Flood Risk Reduction Strategy Scope Development, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And then, member Staunton, the last one on the consent agenda was the proposed final rezoning and final development plan for 727250 France Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was on our last agenda, and we continued it to this agenda for a couple of items, as I understood it. We, we had three conditions on the preliminary approval that we were looking at. One was the efforts we would make on the Wunorf to discourage cut-through traffic. A second was a more complete idea of the design of the 72nd Street corridor. And the third was the write-in, the deceleration lane on France Avenue and the work with the county. From the report, it sounds like the conversations with the county are ongoing. I was hoping to get an update on if there's anything new to report on that.
There, you're looking for more information from the developer on potential striping options on France to eliminate the right turn, but there's no definitive answers, yes or no.
Okay. And in any event, if we approve this, that can move forward, and those continuing conversations can happen. And I understand that is outside the control of the developer, it's really up to the county.
Correct.
And we'll be working with the developer to encourage the county to remove that deceleration lane?
Correct.
Okay. The second item was the Wunorf, and I understand from the, from the materials that have been provided to us that there is a write-out only as part of the design, and that there's other steps that are being taken in the Wunorf to discourage cut-through traffic. Is that right?
Correct. There's only a write-out at 72nd Street.
Right.
So you can't go into the neighborhood, leaving the development. The Wunorf is curved, it's 22 feet wide, there's tree plantings on both sides. Again, they develop this complete street, living street concept to slow traffic and discourage that cut-through.
And as I, as you say, 22 feet wide, that's the driving surface. There's actually a much wider Wunorf that includes the pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Correct.
Okay. And then finally...
Wasn't there a public art feature involved, too, at some point?
Yeah, was there? What, down in the middle to kind of almost a monument-type?
Right in the middle, that's correct.
Okay, great. And as we've discussed in previous conversations on this, that, you know, that's the beginning of the Western Promenade. It doesn't necessarily mean that the cars that are on that would be able to travel across 72nd Street onto a continuation of that if that happened someday. So, and then the third thing is just the 72nd Street corridor. I know we had asked for staff to engage the neighborhood on that conversation, and I know we've got something up on Better Together. Can you give me an update just on where we are in that engagement process and fielding information from the community?
Yep, we have the, the website was created less than a week after that last council meeting. We got the concept up there. We have two forums going right now. One is on the 72nd Living Streets Concept between Linmar and France. We've gotten 15 responses thus far, and it's going to be open till April 23rd, at which point we'll work with the developer, consider all those comments in there, and then come up with a final layout for that street and bring that back to council on May 7th to show you where we landed with that. We also got comments on those intersection, potential intersection improvements on it from pedestrian safety that the city might consider down at Cornelia and Oaklawn, in addition to the street recon. So both those forums are open right now for another few weeks, till the 23rd, and we'll bring the concept back on May 7th.
All right. So there's, there's this block from France to Linmar that is really kind of part of the development.
Yep.
But then, west of there, all the way to Cornelia, we're looking at long-range changes to both pedestrian facilities as well as the roadway?
Not the roadway. Well, roadway in regards to just the intersections at Cornelia. So spot improvements for pedestrian safety at the intersection of 72nd and Cornelia and 72nd and Oaklawn. Because that rest of that segment's not in our street reconstruction program, and it's another four blocks of...
And I know there's been some discussion about sidewalk facilities, pedestrian facilities in the Better Together conversation.
Correct.
Is that part of what we're contemplating there?
Well, there's, I believe there's already a sidewalk facility on the north side.
Right. Would there be contemplation of a sidewalk on the south side?
It's not in our master plan, but can we provide better crossings to the south? There is a sidewalk going down Oaklawn, all the way to the end of that street, so can we provide a safer crossing there? And can we provide safer crossings at Cornelia from the south, from the neighborhood, if any of the kids coming from the south to get to that school?
And in any event, we have control over this decision-making, regardless of what happens with the project as it moves forward.
Correct.
And, and we have the funding to manage this 72nd Street corridor, at least from France to Linmar in the design that's, that's there and may be modified over time.
Funding there, as long as the...
As long as the project goes forward.
As long as the project goes forward, that is going to be paid for by the developer.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That didn't prompt any other questions, I don't think, from council members, so would you care to move the matter?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, second to approve 5O, which is the final rezoning for the final development, including the final development plan and site improvement plan agreement for 727250 France. It also embodies Resolution 2019-23 and Ordinance Number 2018-15. We got a motion, we got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And now we are on to special recognitions and presentations. We've got a real treat. Our former neighbor mayor, Molly Cummings, is here with us tonight, and she has been appointed to the Metropolitan Council and will be representing Edina. I think Scott Neal... And I think Scott Neal, you had a few things to say about Molly, and I certainly will as well.
Actually, so Molly contacted, Ms. Cummings contacted me, asked her if she could come and introduce herself. She probably doesn't need to introduce herself in that way, we know her pretty well, but we asked her to do that and tell us a little bit about what's going on at the Metropolitan Council that affects our community.
All right, good. And I just want to tell folks in the audience and in the television audience that will watch this production, that we've been really blessed to have a neighbor mayor like Molly Cummings, and she'll be a terrific member of the Metropolitan Council and represent us with, you know, in such an effective way. So we look forward to having you there and congratulate you for being selected, and look forward to your comments about the things that you see coming up and that you're eager to work on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's great to be here this evening. Thanks for giving me a few minutes on your agenda. I'm excited to introduce myself in my new role as mayor of Hopkins up until almost a month ago, and then co-chairing with Mayor Havel and the Regional Council of Mayors. I have had the pleasure of getting to know and working with all of the council members except for Mr. Anderson, and I am really excited about representing Edina as we move forward on the council. I had to resign my position as mayor due to conflict of roles, serving on both the Met Council and as an elected official of the City of Hopkins, so I did that. District Five encompasses Hopkins, Edina, Richfield, Bloomington, Fort Snelling, and the airport, so big territory. I was appointed vice chair, and I am serving on both transportation and community development committees. So right now, our focus, we have lots of things, first of all, a lot of orientation. It's a almost all-new council. There were two incumbent members from the Met Council under Governor Dayton that were brought forward. Everyone else is new. Three of us served in elected positions, two mayors, one city council member, and then the chair is also a former mayor. The things that we're currently dealing with, of course, are the transportation issue. We must have a robust transportation system, multimodal, that works for the entire region. So there's a great deal of focus on that with Governor Wal's proposals in the new budget. We're also just starting to approve all the comprehensive plans that are starting to come forward, and that's exciting work that will take lots of time. And as part of my, I have, as mayor, of course, of Hopkins, I've been really focused on the Green Line Extension, which would will have three stations in the city, and I am now really learning the needs for the entire system. So I've been riding the Gold Line, the D Line, the E Line, and learning where all of these routes go and how they interconnect. Certainly, Mayor Havel, and you're very aware of all of that, and the importance of our system, so looking forward to that. And Mr. Neal has already set up regular meetings for the city managers of Hopkins, Richfield, and Edina and myself, so I'm looking forward to that, and I'll do Bloomington separately. They choose to do it a little bit different way. And so we're set through the whole year, and of course, in between meetings, you know where to find me, I'm right next door. I don't have my business cards yet, but when I have them, I'll certainly get them to each of you. And I love the community of Edina, and we've had such a wonderful, close working relationship. I'm just really excited about representing the city on another platform. And so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as I may be.
Questions for Councilmember Cummings? Anybody? Comments? Member Rendell?
Just a quick congratulations, and I'm so happy to see you there. I know it's it's a change for Hopkins, but they're up to it. And Jason's, he'll be a wonderful mayor. He's been, he's been on that council a long time, so he will, he will do well for Hopkins, and and I'm so excited to be able to work with you in this capacity, so congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Rendell, I appreciate that.
Good. Well, thanks for coming over this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
So we've got some students leaving. I was just going to say that we've got other students here tonight, but in addition to the three that we had earlier, but they're exiting right and left here. All right, we're going to move on to the next matter on this portion of the agenda on special recognitions and presentations. We've got a proclamation involving National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, and we've got Jennifer Reddy from our, one of our nine 1-1 dispatchers here to accept the proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation for the council. And the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week is Sunday, April 14th through Saturday, April 20th, 2019. Jennifer, welcome. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone or text the Edina Police Fire Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Edina Police Fire Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore the City Council of the City of Edina hereby proclaims the week of April 14th through April 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in the City of Edina in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second? We got a motion, second to adopt the proclamation as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried. Jennifer, I'm going to walk down and hand you the proclamation, and you may have a few comments you wish to make.
Okay.
With regard to the work that you do upstairs, it's so important for all of us.
I would like to say thank you, Mayor, City Council, for the proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and another thank you to the mayor, council members, city administration, the police department, and the fire department for Edina for continuing support for the 911 dispatch center and keeping personalized service within the City of Edina. I'm going to say a quick little poem about something that's a 911 operator's peer support thing. You probably won't recognize these heroes on the street. They don't wear a badge or carry a gun. They don't drive a fire truck, ambulance, or patrol car, but they are among us. They work around the clock, holidays, birthdays. They often miss family functions, school activities, and are at work when most people are home asleep. Their pictures don't usually make the paper, and they rarely make the news unless a call went bad, or the only record of it is the recorded 911 call. They are the lifeline between someone who needs help and those who respond to give it. 911 operators and dispatchers are the unseen heroes of emergency services. I'm going to add, just say that Edina Dispatch Center is currently comprised of eleven dispatchers that are uniquely talented group of individuals with phenomenal dispatching ability that other dispatchers dispatch centers strive for. Just going to add a few little bit of statistics, what our center handles. Just last year in 2019, excuse me, 18, we just handled under 115,000 calls for service in 2018. And for specifically in Edina, police calls were the highest numbers this past year of 63,104 calls for service, and Edina Fire was 6,015. And another statistic is dispatchers answered more than 117,000 telephone calls in 2018, and nearly 40,000 of them were on the emergency lines. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of your colleagues as well for coming in this evening.
Mr. Mayor, could I just say something?
Yes, Member Fisher.
I just wanted to make one quick comment.
Certainly.
So this last fall, I actually got to do my ride-along.
Okay.
Which is an amazing experience, and, you know, the night was filled with all kinds of exciting things out on the streets and all of that, but there was a point where the officer I was with grabbed dinner, and we came back and had dinner within the 911 center, and I'm like, wow, is that normal? And he said, yeah, we like to, you know, for sometimes you all need dinner, and they can bring it in, and then there's. But what was most amazing about that, it was actually one of the highlights of my night, because what I saw was this amazing teamwork that was happening between the dispatchers and the officers, and then you hear it when you're out, and you're sort of hearing the communication going back and forth. So, you know, we can, we could have 911 dispatching done somewhere else, right? But what I saw was the unbelievable value to our citizens when that teamwork is happening here. And I I left that night, and I've never felt safer, and I just, I just think it was amazing, and it's amazing what you're all doing, so thank you.
Thank you, and I say we have that unique opportunity for Edina to know each of the officers and kind of like their personal life stories, because they come in and what their families comprise of, and that is a very unique thing that we have for Edina, and it's greatly appreciated.
Oh, great.
Good. Yeah, thanks, Jennifer, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Then we have one other item on the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and I'm going to turn to Lisa Schaefer, our Assistant City Manager, who's going to introduce, going to introduce our new Race and Equity Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I am very pleased to introduce our new Race and Equity Coordinator, Heidi Lee, and Heidi started for us on March 18th. She comes to us from the St. Paul School District, where she worked in their office, their Office of Equity Department as a coordinator, a project coordinator for their Race and Equity initiatives. So welcome to Heidi.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. Well, do you have any comments you want to make?
Sorry, this is my first time, so I appreciate the opportunity to be in Edina, and I'm very, I'm looking forward to making connections with you all as well as the community to be able to create a welcome and inclusive environment for all. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome. We're now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We only have one public hearing matter this evening, and it nonetheless is a very important one, is looking at the 50th and France Small Area Plan and talking about all the things that the folks have done that have worked so hard on this matter. I'm going to bring Ian Nemiroff up, first of all, who is the co-chair of the 50th and France Small Area Plan Group, and Ian is one of our residents and also serves on the Planning Commission. And Ian, welcome, and then I'm going to let you introduce the folks that are going to make the presentation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome to your comments.
Thank you, members of council, thank you for hearing us tonight. It was about a year ago when we started the process, we received a lot of applications to be on the work group for this. John Hamilton and I are co-chairs. We received outstanding applications. It was at least a few dozen, and out of that, we were able to get a great group of people that represented a diverse range of experiences, skills, and perspectives, and I'd like to begin, I have a few other things to say, but I'd like to begin by introducing the members of our work group, all of whom are here tonight.
Oh, good.
And we have Mark Arnold is with us tonight. Mark is a jeweler with Continental Diamond. He has a lot of community activities, including Edina Morningside Rotary, Edina Community Foundation, and he's been involved with the Fourth of July Parade and other city activities. Mark wanted to be on the 50th and France Working Group because he used to work at 50th and France, and he loves the history of the district, and he's a, he's frequently there as a customer. Next to Mark, we have Jen Augustson, who is, she's lived on the corner of 50th and Arden for the past 11 years, with a little gap in there when her dog went flying through the air, she had, they had to leave the house while it got rebuilt, but Jen has been, she and her family are regular visitors to the 50th and France District. She is involved with the community, she's been involved with 66 West, which all of you I'm sure are very familiar with, and she wanted to be on the 50th and France Work Group to bring the perspective of a neighbor and someone who's very interested in the district. Professionally, Jen is the Executive Director of Health Partners Institute, a research and education arm of Health Partners. John Breidinger, John is here tonight. John is a practice leader for Cushman and Wakefield's Real Estate Development Advisory Practice. He has been, he is the past president of the Urban Land Institute, Minnesota. He does a lot, this, it was awesome to have him as a volunteer, this is kind of what he does professionally. He is a property owner, he has been a property owner in 50th and France for many years in the building that's currently known as the Paper Source Building. He also tries to give about 15% of his time every year to community improvement activities. Tom Kuhn is here tonight. Tom is a recently retired program manager from the Minneapolis Office of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. He's worked in middle income, moderate income, low-income household housing, senior housing, disabled housing throughout Minnesota. He's a resident of Morningside, he's getting involved with Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing, and he's very interested in redevelopment and growth of the city. He also saw what happened on 44th and France, that piqued his interest in the project. He also, coincidentally, although this didn't matter, he did not, he discovered when he joined the working group that he was from Fort Wayne, Indiana, the hometown of John Hamilton. They didn't know each other.
Patrick Huss is also here tonight.
Patrick is an architect and designer with Lifetime. Previously, he had a private practice, Patrick, he was in private practice as an architect. Patrick brought a very unique perspective to us, a very professional and skilled perspective on how to, the importance of having active communities, and where we could make various parts of the district more active and more enjoyable to people for better experiences. I mentioned just briefly John. John and I together are on the Planning Commission, we're co-chairs. John is an architect by background, founded two, participating, founding two architectural firms, Cunningham and Urban Works. I am an attorney, I've been a corporate attorney for many years, mostly for medical device and technology companies, and it was wonderful working with John as a colleague, and really I felt, I felt a very synergistic relationship. So we started about a year ago, and we really tried to think about what do we want to accomplish with the Small Area Plan, and we started engaging with our working group, we have several meetings, oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. I also wish to thank Bill Smith. Bill Smith is, as you know, is a consultant. Bill worked very hard on this plan. We hired him to work on our comprehensive plan. He's also helped us with four small area plans. He was a great team member. He also helped us on a vision project for the city, and I just want everyone in the city to understand everything Bill did for us over the last three years. Now, with that said, we started with the plan, trying to figure out what do we want to accomplish here, and as I've gone on in the process, and as I've interacted with residents, interacted with working group members, interacted with businesses, I started thinking of it, I started taking the feedback that I'm receiving and started thinking about in terms of analogies, and I think something that, a common thing that almost everyone has in their home, you have photographs and you have tools, and your photographs are things that you display, and you keep them out, they're high points in your life, they're things that you like generally. Your tools are things that you generally keep in a workroom in the basement or in a shed in the backyard, and you don't get them out until if and when you ever decide you want to build something. You may never, I know a lot of people, everyone probably knows people that has tools that they never use. I do. So I think in thinking through that, I think that that came, some of the feedback you receive later, I think there's people that view this project as a photograph project. We viewed it as a tool project. There's, I think that some of the perception is that. There's, I think that some of the perception is, is that, let's take a photograph of 50th and France. It's very lovely, and let's just fix it a little bit. Maybe in your home, you have a photograph of one of your kid's weddings, where there's a brother-in-law that's no longer a member of the family. You'd like to Photoshop that out. Or there was a little bit of, maybe, maybe the background wasn't so great, you might want to change that. And you want to display it on your mantle, and display it for everyone. It's a beautiful part of your life. It's lovely. And I think, and one thing I've realized through this process is, everybody likes 50th and France. I haven't had one conversation of anyone say, just get rid of it. I can't stand it. Everybody likes it. The question is, how do you design your Small Area Plan? What we've tried to come up with is a tool. You may never use the tool. We're not making many recommendations. We're not encouraging many restrictions. Just a handful of things we're recommending and restricting. Students tonight, it's interesting. I mean, one of the, one of the few things we're recommending is, we think environmental is an important thing, and stormwater management are important things. And we're encouraging, as we go on, to consider high-quality environmental and stormwater management, high-quality buildings. We're encouraging, one of our recommendations is step back in height above two stories, so people can enjoy the city. We're looking at the North Ring Road, where the pedestrian crossing, and we're recommending, taking a look at that, see if we can improve that crossing. But besides that, oh, and we're also recommending, if a development proposal comes in, to engage in a robust community engagement process, to collect the feedback of the community, and make sure they're part of the discussion about any proposal that comes before us. But other than that, we're really not making many recommendations or any suggestions for things to restrict. We're trying to come up with a tool that gives you ideas to consider, and me and John, as members of the Planning Commission, ideas to consider as the proposals come before us. We're also trying to create a statement, so when developers look at building in Edina, they can kind of get a sense of the, of the city's preferences. With me tonight, who I just realized I failed to introduce, is my two colleagues, or two of my colleagues on the working group, Christine Picard and Edie Rice. Christine is a Vice President ESG Architecture Firm, and she, she does corporate office space, commercial retail, hotel, hospitality, higher education, transit, multifamily residential work. She's even worked on renovation of casinos and hotel event space. It's been, it's been really a gift to have Christine participate with us, and she put a lot of work into our vision and our principles, that they'll be sharing with us in a few moments. It's also been a gift to have Edie on the, on the working group. Edie's lived in Edina for more than 30 years. She currently lives on West 49th Street. She, she feels the change in 50th and France. It's occurred from the Nolan-Maines Project. It's been very beneficial to have Edie, and she knows what's going on. She sees it every day. Edie's a retired teacher. She's very active in the golf world, as some of you may know. She's involved with Evan Scholars. She's involved with Minnesota Golf Association. Travels the world officiating at professional golf events. She wanted being part of this, because 50th and France is in her backyard. Now, I have a few more moments, and I'm going to turn it over to Christine and Edie. Here's the, here's the plan area. I think you're all fairly familiar with it. You know, it's the commercial boundaries of 50th and France, if we can go to the next one. Right here, we just, here's a picture. And this is a lovely picture. This is how 50th and France was 60 years ago or so. 50th and France is about a 100-year-old district. It's always changed. It's been constantly in change, whether, most of it organic, some of it planful. If you could go to the next slide. In 1974, after many years of discussion, this city, when it was still a village of Edina, organized a, what they called a Commercial Area Plan by a consulting group at that time known as BRW, which was a very leading organization at the time. And they came up with a report, and they had a variety of recommendations. This report, by the way, resulted in parking ramps, which, and the ring roads, much of which were, which, much of it were financed through the use, an early use of TIF, very interestingly. The city really got behind it and said, we're going to figure out a way to get this done, and we're going to figure out a way to fund it. I would put to you that, by the way, in a moment, I'm going to get to this, this was very controversial in its time. It was the subject of years of discussion. And I proposed to you that there's nobody today that wishes the city hadn't done that. Everybody is grateful for those parking ramps, even after all the controversy that occurred 45 years ago. In the 1974 plan that BRW came up with, they, you can see, there's a few items I'd like to highlight, that we can almost say, pull out and put word-for-word and make it part of today's, the statement of the status quo today. Traffic congestion, lack of adequate parking, underused land area, faulty building arrangement, and commercial encroachment on residential areas are current problems in the 50th and France area, right at the top. At the, at the, at the bottom of that paragraph says, "Most ideas have been discarded because of financial considerations, the lack of initiative on the part of merchants to support certain proposals, or the zealous attempts by surrounding residents to halt the spread of commercial encroachment in the area. Issues today are the issues in the past." Even if you'll note, in the next paragraph, it says, "As far back as 1939," basically, these issues are being discussed later on in this report. It gives the history of how proposals and discussions would occur, then would get table based on feedback. This area has constantly changed. It's constantly been an area where people are concerned about change. It's very normal, and I would suggest to you that today is no different. On the next slide, there's a few more things that, again, we could pull, and we could say almost word-for-word fit in 2019. The problems, at the top of the page, "The problems facing the 50th and France retail area are not unique. The problems of traffic circulation and parking, pedestrian access, maintenance, building deterioration, and overall environment are common to one degree or another to all commercial areas of this vintage." And at the bottom of the page, "Even with the problems that have been identified, the 50th and France area has a vitality that does not exist in many such areas. This vitality should be reinforced by making needed improvements, and by providing opportunities for selected growth and expansion of existing facilities, and by attracting complementary functions." So, that kind of ends my introduction. It's been an area of change. Now, I'm very pleased to turn over to Edie and Christine to tell you about all the things the work group came up with over the last year.
Thank you, Ian.
All right. We want to start with community engagement. We know that this is a really important part of this process, and it was incredibly important to the entire work group that the community be heard. And so, we've opened ourselves up in a number of different ways to collect community feedback. I mean, I know City Manager Neil, you had mentioned that there was some comments about that. We just kind of want to talk a little bit about what that process looked like. We had three community meetings that were held as open-house format. At those meetings, we collected responses by comment cards. We went through a series of emails that were shared with us by city staff that had been sent to the city of Edina. Our team looked quite a bit at Nextdoor and read some of the comments that were coming through there. We talked quite a bit via email and phone calls about some of the things that were concerning to the city. We also played a role in the Edina Open Streets. We had a booth there to make ourselves readily available. I think Edie and, was it John or Ian? Edie and Ian opened themselves up for a meeting for coffee with some community members that had reached out to Edie, some of her neighbors, just to provide some more clarity. So, we've done, I think, what we can say that we could as far as outreach.
Yes, but having said that, it was not enough. And if you see the numbers in the chart, we're not proud that there were 20, 25, and 18 people at a community meeting. We would hope that we could get more people interested in intending, in attending those things and participating in the process. We truly wanted to hear their input in the types of ideas and concepts that we were considering. Now, having said all of that, recently, the new website that went up is, is much improved, and it's terrific. The Better Next Door is great. I've been to it, and front and center, it has links to the comp plan and to each of the small area plans. So, where I was hearing from people, I can't find it on the website. I don't know how to access. We already have made the moves to correct that, and I hope that in the future, as we have important issues, that we do everything that we can to reach out and notify the neighbors that are involved, and the community at large, because 50th and France belongs to everybody, not just, not just the surrounds.
So, today, we want to touch a little bit on community feedback, the things that we heard from community members that was desired, as well as a couple topics of concern, and our hope is that our presentation can clarify anything that might have been a misconception for any of the community members today. Some of the things that we heard that people wanted, a thriving commercial district, an environment that's safe and inviting, consideration to some of the sustainability and environmental issues, which clearly has been a hot topic today. We, we heard that we want the district to attract and sustain people of all ages and different demographics, healthy food options, mixed use, so retail, restaurants, entertainment, housing, open space, kind of a vitality of a variety of uses, a lot of local stores. There, one of the big talking points was respecting the adjacent neighborhoods, which we'll touch on in a little bit, opportunities for seniors to remain in their community, underground parking, activity within alleys, engaging streetscape, unique buildings with quality materials, that small-town feel. I think somebody, John Breidinger likened it to a main street, and I think that was kind of something that our group kind of put in the forefronts of our mind. It's part of the character of 50th and France. And then, some improved walkability, more gathering spaces, green spaces, public programming. And then, as far as transportation, easier pedestrian access, bike facilities, better parking options, just all around better access to the site. The three primary concerns that were themes coming out of community feedback were traffic, building height and density, and then the connections to the residential neighborhoods.
So, traffic was probably number one. We heard about traffic all the time, and believe me, I understand about traffic. I live on the street that has a lot of traffic and cut-through traffic on it. And one of the things that we discovered is, part of the, the feel of traffic, no matter what the numbers or the charts say, is how you feel the traffic in your neighborhood. And the commute times, AM and PM, have gotten really long on that stretch of 50th Street, going somewhere between Highway 100 and 35W in both directions. And that's traffic that is not stopping at 50th and France, and is not attracted to 50th and France, or not attracted to it. So, that's traffic that's coming through to cut through. Some of it might be caused by the construction that's happening on 35W currently, and maybe some of that will mitigate a bit when that project is finished. But there's a portion of the traffic that we really can't do anything about. And we can have our traffic engineers perhaps do a better job with signals and that type of thing to try to move people through the district, but that traffic is, is going to continue. Parking is also a concern in the area, and that's a particular concern in my neighborhood, because it's an easy place to park for access to the district. At the moment, my personal opinion is that the parking is being caused by the construction that is happening at Nolan and Main. And if that is the case, that's a temporary issue. Neighbors have reached out to the city, and the city is already trying to work on some sort of reasonable solution to get us through to the finish line at the end of the Nolan and Main's project. Currently, the north ramp is open. It's big. There's space for everybody in it, but it's not being utilized to its full capacity, partly because, first of all, the construction folks are not allowed to park in the ramp, so that's not an option for them. But I think for the public at large, it's difficult to find it and access it, because you sometimes can only access from one way. So, I think once, in the near term, I believe that we will have two-way traffic restored on Market Street, and I think that, that will also help some of the traffic and some of the parking issues. But it's something to consider, that there have been unintended consequences of the construction at Nolan-Maines, although I support it very much. Some of these consequences are the parking that ends up in the neighborhoods, and the extra cut-through traffic that's going through the neighborhoods. This particular chart that Christine has up demonstrates the different traffic components of uses. And actually, the residential is one of the uses that uses, one of the uses that creates the least amount of traffic compared to a restaurant or a retail. And we have Nolan and Main, so that is probably a good thing, that even though that will create traffic for those individuals that rent the apartments, it will not create the kind of traffic that retail and restaurants are currently creating.
The next issue that we talked about was building height and density. So, just to clarify what our plan is proposing, we are not recommending any changes to the current zoning plan, so we're staying within that four-story height. We are, we are promoting density in this area. We know that it's incredibly important to the vitality of the district, so we are aligned with the city's vision for zoning in this area. One of, one of the things that we want to point out is that we are looking, we are promoting the possibility of developers coming in and asking for variances on height with the exchange of meeting the same-floor area ratio, but having a smaller building footprint, so that there's more open space contributed to public uses throughout the site, and possibly just public improvements and other things that they're willing to give in exchange for a variance. But our plan basically is allowing city council to follow the codes that are in place today, and it's not requesting any adoption of something else. I'll also note that the plan recommends step backs above two stories, and sensitivity as far as developments that transition into the surrounding neighborhoods.
And I've heard a lot from our neighborhood area about that, step backs, that, that we don't have strong enough language in the plan about that. And so, I spent a little time today, we mentioned it on page nine, page 10, page 31, page 34, page 51, and page 71. We talk about graceful transitions on page 51, and that preferable locations for buildings of height to be in the center of the district, also on page 51. So, we, we felt very strongly about that aspect, and we made sure that it was mentioned frequently throughout the plan.
And then, our last topic was direct connections to the neighborhood, which this is a good segue. Two things came out of it. During one of our community meetings, we had kind of a gamut. We, we had printed out large plans for the community to sketch on, one that showed very minor changes to the 50th and France District, and one that pushed the envelope. And I think there, I think the work group, setting community feedback aside, or probably even before receiving it, kind of rejected the idea of creating a roadway from the north side into 50th and France. I think the people that were at that community meeting, and some of the people that commented after the fact, reiterated their opinions in alignment with the work group. So, our plan doesn't show any types of connections, and it certainly doesn't show a roadway. Connectivity is still incredibly important to the success of this district. We know that in an ever-changing retail world, that access to the site is super important. And we, we hope that council will take in, take this into consideration when developments are proposing something, and encourage connectivity. We've got a whole section on that that we'll touch on more, but we just wanted to clarify that we're not...
Well, and additionally, the, the neighborhoods to the north were very clear about not wanting specific connectivity to their neighborhood in terms of a path or a roadway. But one of the reasons we want to keep it as a goal, or a guideline in the plan, is because, because it is important, and because connectivity doesn't have to mean a road or a path. It can mean improved sidewalks. It can mean bicycle lanes. And given the fact that that one neighborhood was objecting, this plan covers over 10, probably 10 years of time, and a lot of composition in that neighborhood could, could change. So, we felt that that was something that should be decided at the time of development were to occur and come before the Planning Commission and the city council. And in fact, on page 75, Ian referred to this, it specifically states that at any time of a proposed development, that there should be robust public engagement. So, we are taking that into consideration, but we like the idea of KONIC. So we are taking that into consideration, but we like the idea of connectivity as a goal.
Well, and one of the ironic parts is there was a neighborhood to the north, but then there was also feedback from neighbors to the south that were very, very specifically asking for improvements in their ability to get to the 50th and France area in a very safe way. So, you know, there was kind of a threshold of responses there. The second piece to this is the existing easement on the west side of the US Bank site. This easement exists. The plan proposes that it remain. I don't know if we want to read this statement, or you want to elaborate a little bit more?
I don't think we need to read the statement, other than to say we were aware of it, we respected it in the plan. It is shown as a green strip on any of the concept drawings that you see. We recommend, I mean, we don't recommend any change to it, and we know through Planning Department that it cannot be vacated without the consent of the homeowners on Maple Road, and that it is held in common ownership with the US Bank. So some have suggested that it not be included in the study area, but it belongs to that property, so we can't not include it. But we are definitely respecting it as an easement as it exists, and respect that it should remain in place.
Well, and frankly, we hope that it's a telling sign that we've chosen to keep it in the plan and that we're respectfully keeping it as it exists today. All right, now to the fun stuff. I'll just read our vision statement really quickly, because I think we spent a lot of time making sure that the wording was right on this. 50th and France is the heart of Edina and will continue to be an energetic, mixed-use district in the future. Its vibrancy and energy will stem from activity occurring at the street level, which will be enhanced by its walkability, tree-lined streets, public areas, and linkages within and between the buildings and public areas. Its buildings will be pedestrian-oriented and of the highest architectural quality. Even while evolving, as it always has, 50th and France will continue to be a year-round meeting and gathering place that is inviting to wide ranges of people who will enjoy living, shopping, working, and being entertained in the district. The district will value street-level pedestrian activity, which will combine with the placement of building to enhance movement to, through, and within the district. So after kind of formulating our vision statement, we came up with what we think are the eight guiding principles that will help kind of put this plan in motion. Connectivity is a big one, we touched on it. So to us, and to Edie's point earlier, this can take a lot of forms. So it's pathways, it's public areas, it's basically making sure that the public realm is a safe and inviting environment, and providing conveniences to those that walk and bike to and throughout this site.
And 50th and France already has a good share of connectivity within the buildings, and we hope that that type of thing does continue, where you don't have to walk around an entire block to get to a different entrance. There's lots of appealing alleyways, and I think we can maybe even enhance what happens in those alleyways.
Building design, we're calling for upscale aesthetic. We talked a little bit already about the traditional Main Street, so the goal would be for these buildings to be beautiful and of high architectural quality, buildings that are slated to stand the test of time for 50 years plus, low maintenance and upscale materials. Just interest in architectural detail and kind of breaking up those facades so that you stay within that kind of traditional Main Street, small shop-front aesthetic that gives 50th and France the character that it has today.
And you might make the case that as much as we've heard about density and scale, that we should be just as concerned about the building design and the materials that are used for the buildings, because that means everything.
Density and scale, we talked right away in the beginning of our work group sessions about how important this is. We know that the commercial world is changing, we know that this district, as Ian pointed out very well in his introduction, has been one of change. We want it to be economically sustainable, and we think that density is a key to that. So the plan is promoting, or this initiative is promoting, the increase in density and also mixed-use development, so that you're providing kind of, you know, a strategic blend of what could be here, so that there's activity all throughout, all days, all throughout, all seasons. As far as building massing, step backs are really important, it's built right into our initiative here. And then we're even talking very specifically about potential impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. So we're promoting density, but we're promoting it to be done in a very well-designed, strategic and sensitive way. Economic vitality, so this kind of goes hand-in-hand with what we were saying about density, kind of a range of housing and commercial use, supporting the ability to live, workshop, and play in the district. Talking about, in some of the history conversations, 50th and France has always been a district that provides basic goods and services, so we want that to be kind of in the forefronts of our minds, as well as entertainment and boutique shops. It's part of the character of this area. Public realm, this is where we're looking at kind of the street level, and we're looking for improvements to sidewalks, opportunities for engagement with restaurant patios, architectural interest with building entrances, incorporation of vegetation, ambient lighting, art features, landmark elements, things that give 50th and France character and make it a memorable district, set it apart from other areas. And then one other thing that I'll add, it may be somewhere else in our slides, but we talked a lot about how Edina has kind of a prideful reputation for education. And so when we were talking about public realm, we were talking about implementing some sort of credential for a developer to come in and provide some sort of learning opportunity. So that could be in a variety of different ways. We kind of spitballed and didn't give it any formality, because we think that's something that you could be creative with. Urban design, this is, again, kind of looking at how these spaces can be used year-round, how we're creating spaces that feel safe and inviting, touches on the lifelong learning aspect. And then just areas that promote informal or formal social interaction, so supporting things like Edina Art Fair and looking for more opportunities that Mark can head up and post.
And we have a new one that will be coming online this fall with Nolan and Main's. They have provided a, I am sure will be lovely, new square, which I understand could possibly hold up to 200 people. And we were at a meeting the other day where we were talking about the progress of that project, and they were talking with the city about coming up with some joint social event that they would want to invite the public to, to kind of christen that space and open it up to the public. But I think that's an example of something that we would like to encourage in Edina, and we can look forward to in Nolan and Main.
Two more, site sustainability, obviously this is a hot topic today. So promoting open green space, canopy tree coverage, where you've got open lots, green roofs on buildings, looking at stormwater management strategies that include rain gardens and landscaping that's low maintenance, just smart design. None of this is, this is all where building design is headed. I think Edina's on the forefront of this, so it's only natural that this would be part of our small-area plan. And then the last one, access, parking, and movement. This basically talks about how, right now, the parking structures in 50th and France sustain what's there, but in the future, we want any new development to provide parking by some means to sustain their own development. And then it takes a look at opportunities to encourage other means of transit, so, you know, whether that's bus rapid transit, some types of shelter for any form of public transit, even housing developments that have amenities that are focused for bikers, like storage units and maintenance areas. Just really trying to think about what the future of access to and throughout this site looks like, and then also just how we can promote getting to the site and then being able to move all throughout it as kind of a one-stop-shop. It's the appeal of 50th and France right now, and we want to make sure that that remains.
And to enhance the things that don't involve cars and people coming in to park. We have the facilities for doing that. But we also want to really encourage by having special, perhaps special bike racks inside a parking ramp where people can park their bike and then walk throughout the district. Come on a bus, because the buses run more reliably and they can make plans to do so. So that will, ideally, it will help with some of the traffic, but it will bring people to the district other than in a car.
Okay, let's get into the plan. So this is an early sketch that was done and discussed in some of our working sessions. What it's looking at here is just the existing buildings. Some of these areas were identified as, by the work group, as, you know, possible areas for redevelopment. I think I'd like to stress today, we're looking for areas that just might be for larger mixed-use developments. We have no idea what the future holds. We attempted to reach out to the Business Association to get some feedback on what their plans are for the existing buildings and what they've heard as rumors for potential development. And I think our group even went as far as to try to reach out to Lunds and some of the other business owners more specifically. I can't say that we got any good feedback, which is only natural. But I think we're just looking for opportunities to kind of identify what might be a good area for change. So you'll see in the plan, the gray boxes are existing boxes, the red and yellow are identifying mixed-use or housing developments. Some of the things that, you know, the shaded areas in the plan are looking at the public realm and how that integrates, and then you'll see all of the line work that kind of connects through those buildings and hits on what Edie was just talking about, is the ability to kind of move through all the structures to get from point A to point B throughout this development.
And again, I think it's important to remember, these are concepts. This is not a master plan. We are in no way qualified to create a master plan. But we just wanted to throw some ideas out of things that might be workable within the confines of the small-area plan. So they're concepts, they're ideas to consider. We didn't want to impede the creativity of a developer who may want to come along and purchase a parcel and come up with some terrific design for it. And in the case of that, we have a process to handle all of that. We have a very rigorous process where they will work on site plans with the city and through the Planning Commission, and ultimately bring it to the City Council. So we didn't want to restrict any of that creativity.
So the plan here, on the left, you'll see the existing 50th and France plan, and then on the right is the conceptual plan that's included in our small-area plan. The dash areas kind of identify what we thought were those key areas. Some of the things that you'll notice are improvements on 51st, just kind of really taking a look at what that intersection looks like as you're coming up from the south side or southern approach to the site, trying to do tree-lined streets, things to slow down traffic, trying to straighten out that intersection, trying to create liner buildings on that south side, so instead of feeling like a through road as the back of house to the Lunds building and parking structure, it starts to feel more residential, more eyes-on-the-street, a little bit safer, a little bit more inviting. Looking at opportunities for plazas or areas for public engagement as part of a bigger development. And then you'll notice that the easement, the existing easement that we talked about earlier, is still indicated in green on the west side of that US Bank site. And then lastly, we just have two perspective views of the same thing, looking at it from the two different angles, where you can kind of see, these are showing massing based on current city code for height.
That's a wrap.
Thank you. Thank you, Edie. Thank you, Christine. With that, we offer it to you. Thank you for your time.
All right, folks, this is a public hearing matter. It means that you will have three minutes to come up, give us your name, give us your thoughts about this proposed plan adoption by the City Council, with these guiding principles in mind that have been discussed by the members of our community that sat on the Small Area Plan Work Group. So if folks want to come forward, you're sure welcome to come forward. And just a reminder, you'll have a green light when you start, and you'll have an orange or a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and then you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments, so that we can stay within the allocated timeframe. So anyone wish to come forward and testify regarding this matter?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Members of the council?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Pearson. I live at 4513 Browndale Avenue in Edina. I have a handout, can I give that to you all?
You can hand it to the clerk, and she'll disseminate it to us. I think that might be the simplest thing for you.
I'm here to express my concern, and the concern of my neighbors about the plan. 50th and France is an exciting, wonderful area, we all love it, we enjoy going there. But it's not just about development, it's also about the traffic. Traffic, traffic, traffic has been an issue since the '70s. The people who presented the plan, and I commend them for their hard work, indicated that that was a significant concern of the people who attended the meetings. And yet, the presenters told you that they have no solution for the traffic problem. Now, the Edina 2018 Comprehensive Plan said the following, "There is a fundamental link between transportation planning and land use planning. Successful land use planning cannot take place without taking transportation considerations into account. I submit to you that this plan is flawed because it is a toolbox for intense retail and residential development. There is nothing in the toolbox that deals with the traffic congestion that will inevitably result from intense retail and residential development." Now, you have in front of you information that I think proves this very point, and it's taken from the plan itself. The plan tells us the number of trips that will be generated by certain types of land development. A quality restaurant of 1,500 square feet will develop, generate 202 daily trips. A retail store will generate 100 daily trips per 1,500 square feet. Residential use, 1,500 square feet of residential use will generate 10 to 12 daily trips. Now let's take that data and apply it to the Nolan and Main's development, which is 12,500 feet of quality restaurant, 12,500 feet of retail store, and 162,000 feet of residential use. The report's own data tells us that Nolan and Main's will generate 3,700 daily trips to add on to the existing traffic that comes through 50th and France and the surrounding areas. Can the roadways handle that additional traffic? The answer is no. If you look at the next page, the ones I gave you, the information on this chart is from Mindot. It tells us the traffic capacity of the roadways in the 50th and France area. Whittale to Halifax now has 15,700...
Mr. Pearson, I need to have you wrap up. You're on your three-minute mark.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
We're over capacity now.
Okay.
The plan cannot deal with the excess capacity generated by residential and commercial development. I urge you to reconsider and vote no.
Thank you.
I don't think you heard much about clarity about density. Mayor and City Council, Roberta Castellano, 48...
Mayor and City Council, Roberta Costellano, 4854 France Avenue South. There are four statements of fact in the Small Area Plan with regard to density as in dwelling units per acre. Let's review and analyze those facts. Executive Summary, Roman numeral, page eight. Nolan Mainz will exceed, quote, "the current density limit of 12 dwelling units per acre." Page 33, in future land use, quote, "maximum residential density up to 100 dwelling units per acre." Page 35, quote, "It is proposed that the residential component of the 50th and France small area should have a residential density of 12 to 100 dwelling units per acre," close quote. Page 51, quote, "With the adoption of the plan, the city will revise the comprehensive plan to establish a residential density range of 12 to 100 dwelling units per acre." To summarize, close quote, excuse me, "to summarize, a current max of 12 and a requested range of 12 to 100." Is this true? No, it is false. And people of Edina, you are witness to a scandal. In a letter dated June 27, 2014, the Met Council administratively approved an increase in the mixed-use center districts, MXC, including 50th and France, to a range of minimum 12 to maximum 30. That's five years ago. A lot of people no longer remember the details of Nolan Mainz, so I will tell you. In 2017, at the Nolan Mainz hearings, the City Council approved a comp plan amendment to increase the density at 50th and France to a maximum of 75. And I'll remind you, the executive summary said the current limit is 12. Okay? So are up to 75. But then, through a series of actions behind the scenes and utilizing Grandview in the Avedore hearings, Edina actually acquired formal approval from the Met Council on November 8, 2017, of an increase in density at 50th and France to a maximum of 100 in 2017. And I have the letter, and you are busted. And why would Edina do that? Well, in my opinion, the most obvious reason is that it would allow developers, for example, Lunds, to move forward with the assurance that the legal permission for ultra-high density was already in place, and that formal development proposals could be presented ASAP after the Small Area Plan is adopted, quickly obtaining council approval before the citizens of Edina could mount a response to proposals that will shock them. Edina was able to accomplish this maneuver because there is a void in the security procedures at the Met Council in that they do not require a city to submit the record of public notice for inspection. The city of Edina has deceived the Met Council and betrayed the public's trust, and Edina has continued to deceive the public with this Small Area Plan by loading it with false data and an ongoing cover-up of the formal approval gained in 2017 through improper means. This example is but one set of numerous instances of pattern factual misstatements in this document. The city of Edina has demonstrated at this time that they are not capable of conducting a comprehensive plan development review and approval process. I call on the City Council--
Costellano, I need to have you wrap up.
I will. Yep, I'm right there.
I've let you drift over here.
Thank you. I call on the City Council--
You know what I mean. I've let you drift over long enough.
I call on the City Council to deny this amendment and to suspend the process indefinitely until various inquiries are conducted, including conflict of interest, until security procedures are adopted and implemented at various levels, until the city is able to produce a document that is wholly accurate and truthful, and until the city is able to consistently conduct its operations in an open-upstanding and forthcoming manner. Thank you.
Folks, we don't do that here. We respect everybody's opinion, and we do it in an environment that's neutral. So just because you agree with Ms. Costellano, it doesn't provide you an opportunity for an emotional outburst. There's a lot of people in here that have an opposite view, and we don't want to discourage anybody from expressing their viewpoint. Ms. Costellano, you've been here many, many times. You know the rules on three minutes. I let you drift over quite a bit. And so please be mindful of that in the future. You've always been mindful of it in the past. All right. Anybody else wish to testify?
Good evening. My name is Tom Rottis. I live on Bruce Avenue. I'd just like to briefly comment that I think there are two--
What's your address on Bruce Avenue?
4512 Bruce Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Rottis.
I think there are two significant changes to policy in this report that have been kind of glossed over. One is, we were just talking about, the 100 units per acre target, which is, in effect, being set by this report, which is a radical step up from current levels. The other is this odd explanation of no change in the four-story zoning policy, and yet, an invitation to seek variances, which really, I think, means a policy of zoning by variance and not by code, which is really not, it's not just bad policy, it's no policy at all. And given those last comments, I think opens up, frankly, the council to charges of cronyism and a lack of transparency if codes are being thrown out the window and developers are being invited to act just by variance alone. So I think that's deeply concerning, and I encourage you to oppose the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rottis. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dan Utop. I live at 4915 Maple Road. I respectfully disagree about the community engagement that they spoke about. My house is right next to the easement, the green strip in the plan. Myself and my neighbors received no notification regarding the community feedback meetings. And for numerous weeks in earlier, plan had a road running right through that easement. We became aware of this plan in the seventh inning. I have a deep concern that the density promotion in this plan is going to have unintended consequences in the form of making a difficult traffic situation worse and parking spilling out into the surrounding neighborhoods like you see in Uptown. So my feeling is this plan is developer-friendly and resident-unfriendly.
Good evening again. Dana Deutsch, 4921 Maple Road. Nice to see all of you. I know that the Small Area Plan Working Group had to have spent many, many hours focused and ultimately getting feedback. I've been the petition leader. I own that tonight. And we are petitioning for the boundary of the SAP study area to be redrawn, specifically redrawn to exclude the green strip representing the easement buffer on the U.S. Bank site. We petitioned in December, when the buffer had disappeared altogether for a road, just to inform about the easement, which we weren't certain was widely known, as well as its legal protections. Commissioners Nemroff and Hamilton then advised that these were unapproved concepts due to errors in communication, and further stated that the existing buffer areas around the U.S. Bank site are intended to remain. Now, the revised drawings in the SAP that you're looking at tonight show the buffer as a green strip captioned "recommended to be retained" on page 37. Still, other illustrations in the SAP show the lots containing the easement as "commercial." See existing land use on page 30, figure 3. And on page 32, figure 4, future land use, quote, "mixed-use center." Now, I know that this easement buffer doesn't affect, directly affect, all but eight homes on Maple Road. But it is a 50-foot-deep buffer, running the length of eight homes, and it does have bearing on future plans, thoughts, and ideas for the U.S. Bank site, if protected. To anyone here who isn't aware, that bright green strip, to repeat, is a protected perpetual easement zoned R1, buffering residential from commercial. I believe the drawings and the language in the SAP confuse and will potentially mislead if the SAP boundary were to be redrawn to exclude the easement buffer, the intentions and recommendations in the language in the SAP would be crystal clear to all. Thank you.
Good evening.
Martha Moffett, 4929 Maple Road. Honorable mayor, honorable City Council members, want to first say that we're grateful for all the effort that's been put into the plan by the Planning Commission and the working group. I also would like to voice some concern about the proposal to allow a variance from four stories to six, depending on what the developer proposes in terms of public good promoted by the plan. And I would submit that the council, that we shouldn't even consider a plan submitted by a developer unless it would add to the public value, the value of the space, and that should not just be those who want to do more than four stories that are going to contribute to the beauty of, the continuing beauty and functionality and desirability of 50th and France, but that even any developer of first, one story, two stories, three stories, that that should be an innate consideration. I agree that allowing variance to be made leads to a sense of helplessness of the citizens of Edina, a sense that deals are being made behind closed doors, that we don't have access to the information about why they're being made, or are not able to voice our concerns about it. So it doesn't seem to be a constructive way to go forward with this plan. Also, I just wanted to speak in concern about parking considerations. So glad to hear about this, as I understand it, recommendation that every developer provide parking for both the residents and the visitors to what they develop within their plan. I can say, as a resident of Maple Road, that the parking situation is difficult and dangerous. And our road is narrow enough that when there's cars parked, it really makes it difficult. Cars parked close to my driveway, it's a narrow one, makes it very difficult to back out, to get in, and particularly when there's snow on both sides. So there's a great deal of concern among residents for the safety and the continuing beauty of our street. Also, I wanted to voice support for this sense of sensitivity to the homes when zoning is, when buildings are considered and development is considered. And it seems to me that when there's old development and new development, we have beautiful examples around the world, like the Louvre and Ayre-Pay, the brand-new structure in Paris that goes so beautifully with the old building of the Louvre. And any development that we have, I would propose that, to the extent that it goes beautifully with the homes that are there, it will increase the value of both the homes and the development itself at 50th and France. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett.
Hello, council members. Mayor, my name is Peter McDonough. I live at 5132 Hankerson Avenue, a few blocks from here, on the edge of another commercial district. And I want to support the plan. When I first moved to Edina in 95, 50th and France, I always thought was an iconic area. And I feel there's a lot of people who want to live in Edina, and that's a good thing. And I think that allowing four stories to go to six stories, and then they have to do more public space improvements, is another good thing. It'll improve the community, it'll improve 50th and France. And the Met Council has some thresholds for transportation, and one of them is 35 people per acre is the count that they want to have bus lines. And so the kind of numbers that you're proposing for essentially one of the hubs of Edina, I don't think is outrageous. I think it's reasonable. And I also think that this commercial district really provides a lot of economic benefit to the city of Edina as well. So I'm in support of the plan, I think. I don't work for anybody there. I have no financial ties, but I like to see Edina continue to be progressive in developing its assets. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, most cities, well-known, signature cities, have the spelling of their name somewhere in, like, Corten Steel or something like that, like Amsterdam and many, many other cities. I'd like to see Edina consider doing something like that at 50th and France. It's just a little thing that I think would be beneficial to the city. But otherwise, I support the plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Charlotte Appeldorn, 4611 Town Circle in White Oaks. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the working group. I think they did work really hard, particularly appreciate the effort of the citizens who really made an effort personally to reach out to some of the neighbors. I do think the city's outreach could have been a lot better. But I just want to direct your attention to some specific pages on the draft. I feel like there's confusion over what we're talking about in terms of height and density here. On the one hand, we have the working group saying, "We're not changing the zoning, it's a four-story limit." But then, there's this height bonus language, and then there's, you know, what are we? Are we incentivizing and encouraging height and density or not? I think it's a little bit unclear. On pages nine and 10, just to reinforce that, at the last working group meeting, two of the citizen members asked why the plan includes photos of seven-to-10-story buildings. And the answer that was given was that it was hard to find photos that illustrated certain design elements. I just don't think that's a good answer in this day and age. And I think that having those photos of 10-story buildings, seven-to-10-story buildings, sends a message. I think it's meant to send the message that maybe that is what's being encouraged in this plan. So I would ask that those be just replaced with a different photo. I can't believe it's that difficult. On page 34, we have the height bonus language. And what concerns me about that is that it does apply to the entire district, including the U.S. Bank parcel and the post office parcel, which are directly adjacent to residential homes. So that is suggesting that five-plus-story buildings are encouraged to be proposed on those parcels. You know, there might be verbiage in the plan about encouraging height in the middle, but that's not what it does. It encourages it on those parcels that are directly adjacent. So I would request respectfully that we consider taking out the height bonus language. I just don't think it adds that much. And on page 35, we have the adoption of the 100 dwelling units per acre density, which is the same as Southdale. And we just haven't heard much tonight, that I've heard, that explains why we need that kind of density in an area like 50th and France, which is bordered by roads that are already approaching capacity for the city in terms of traffic, that are already congested, and that's one of the top concerns in the area. So I just, I think that that density maximum, combined with the height bonus option, will create an unreasonable expectation by developers and could push up land values, ultimately making it harder then in the future to scale down proposals if we do feel like maybe it's more than we can handle in that area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Appeldorn.
Good evening. My name is Dave Worth, 4908 Maple Road. So I think that the major flaw in this plan is really that this focuses on 50th and France, just on one half of 50th and France. That's the dine half. Now, if you read the newspapers, you understand that there's the 2040 plan in Minneapolis that essentially any single-family home can be a triplex, and they're calling for more density within their major corridors of major Minneapolis roads. So whether we build another Nolan Mainz or not, there's density to come. So I think the major flaw is the traffic, is addressing the traffic concerns within 50th and France. On a side note, as a resident of Maple Road, I'd like to also suggest that the-- On a side note, as a resident of Maple Road, I'd like to also suggest that the buffer is outside the SAP boundary, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South. I wanted to echo the comments that Mr. Rades made, that Edina's zoning plan is zoning by variance. Actually, I have a tape of your city attorney sometime in the last 15 months stating that there's no legal reason why each development couldn't be assigned its own zone. This is an iconic statement that probably deserves a cold shower, but nonetheless, there was so much aspirational, flowery words in the development that was presented initially here. Oh, we need green roofs, which I assume means turf, but then we also want solar. So now, are you going to have both? And when the roof leaks, are you going to tear them both up? But green is good, solar is good, bike lanes, and we should have not just storage for the bikes, but maintenance for the bikes. It's not clear to me, if your bicycle is broken, how you get it from your home to the 50th and France storage depot so it can be worked on. But let's put that aside for a minute. Women that come to 50th and France and buy thousands of dollars' worth of designer clothes, or thousands of dollars' worth of pots and pans, and other kitchen appliances, or jewelry, or whatever, are not going to ride their bike from wherever they live to 50th and France, and then buy their purchases, and sling them over their shoulder, and take them home. So you're going to have to have parking. Bicycles are a great non-impact form of exercise, but the reality is, in Minnesota, there is something that we have come to call winter, winter, ice and snow. And there are a few hardy imbeciles that actually ride fat-tire bicycles all winter along to their job, but they're going to blue jean jobs, where apparently they can work with their coworkers, and their body odors don't make any difference. But in downtown Minneapolis, and at the University of Minnesota, the people that run those two institutions are considering mandating that office buildings have not only bike storage, but a shower room and clothing storage, so people can ride their bike to work, and then change clothes, and take a shower before they go to work, and then reverse it. Now, this is, you know, you may be able to ride your bike somewhere if you don't have to carry packages during the seven months of summer and fall, but bicycles are not a 12-month phenomenon in Minnesota, period.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Heather Wallace. I live at 4701 Towns Road. I just wanted to reiterate that, as was mentioned, the neighborhoods to the north are not interested in additional connectivity to the 50th and France area. The existing streets are working just fine. We don't need a through street, and we don't need a path through the existing neighborhood to get to the, to 50th and France district. I would also reiterate, I also have concerns about the idea that zoning is to four stories, but we're encouraging variances. Those of us who have purchased homes in the surrounding areas count on zoning to be predictable and protect our property values. And I think it's important that zoning be clear, and that we be able to count on it. If somebody really wants a variance, maybe they can ask, but the invitation for a variance at the very beginning, I don't like that idea. And then I think the density and the traffic issues that were brought up need to be addressed. I understand that the group worked really hard, and I really like a lot of things that I see. And I don't think that they felt empowered or had an ability to address traffic issues that exist regardless of what's going on with new development, but the traffic issues do need to be addressed. And before I leave, I will just say that I bike from my house in Edina to my work at St. Catherine University, and I bring things with me, and I change clothes, and I do that not every day, but enough. So people really do bike. Thanks.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Francis Murphy, 4925 Maple Road, Edina. I'm largely here just to echo some of the concerns that have already been made here this evening. First, with respect to the buffer that was highlighted in green in the plan, I want to, you know, reiterate the idea that that should be removed from the small-area plan to avoid any confusion. Secondly, wanted to reiterate the concerns around the, you know, the variances with respect to the height, and, you know, that this may go above four stories, particularly if it, you know, is right up against that buffer area. It sort of mitigates or takes away a lot of the good of having that buffer area if suddenly there's a six-story building right behind it. I don't think that's fair or reasonable in that context. So, you know, the scaling is obviously hugely important then, as you move away from that buffer. But I think the invitation for height bonuses is the wrong way to go, and again, would petition that that be removed. You know, I do like the idea that, you know, Edina is developing, and, you know, is going in, you know, many good directions. But again, you know, the whole traffic issue here does not seem to have been addressed at all, and, you know, there doesn't seem to be a solution in place to address that. So that's another significant concern with the plan as it currently stands. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Brian Wood. I live at 4808 Maple Road. I wasn't intending to speak tonight. I've been very impressed by my neighbors who have talked, but unfortunately, there's one area that I've not heard anybody talk about, and my understanding of city government is safety is one of the principal purposes of what you're here for. The traffic situation at that area is horrible now. If you walk there between 3:30 and 5:30, you walk your dog, you walk your kids, you play on bikes, traffic is cutting through constantly, and they don't stop at stop signs, and they merge through, and they go quickly, and they're one right after the other, and it's not a very safe environment. Now, you're going to double or potentially triple that kind of traffic, and I can only tell you that public safety should be a primary concern of this organization, and yet I haven't heard it registered yet. And it needs to be. If you haven't been there, and you haven't seen it, please, take some time. Walk there. Walk your dog. Watch these cars cutting through to go to Minneapolis or to go somewhere else. It is not a safe place to be during those times, and this plan is only going to enhance and increase that risk. And until you see it and recognize it, I'm afraid this plan is really flawed and needs to be readdressed to take those issues into consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Wood. Okay. See no one coming forward, and don't hear anybody saying they want to come forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We had a motion, a second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Yeah, some good issues to talk about, and we've got folks that worked real hard here, and we've got staff resources as well. So I'm going to go back all the way to Mr. Pearson. Sometimes I start at the back and move back to the front, but I think Mr. Pearson's raised an issue that others have raised as well, and that deals with traffic, and I think folks said that were working on the committee that this is one of the bigger concerns they heard as well. And Mr. Pearson had some information that he pulled out of the proposed plan that shows some traffic counts that don't match up with what I had from when we approved the project for Nolan Maines. And so at that time, the total estimated daily trips generated by the new project were estimated at 2,408, and the housing-only part of it was 549. And then the traffic engineer that we hired, SRF, said that the study shows that all intersections at 50th and France operate at an acceptable level and will continue to do so. So I know that there was an email that was circulated too that talked about being at 157%, 181% of capacity. But nonetheless, we've got data in the proposed small-area plan that differs from the data that was provided to the city by SRF, and I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile any of that. And I don't know if Director Milner, you can be of any help on that issue or not.
Mayor, I can. So I got a copy of that email today, and we looked into it. So the table you're looking at is a guidance document. It's a high-level planning document of how much traffic certain different street configurations can handle. So you see on there, on a two-lane suburban street, it potentially can handle 10,000. There's other charts that show it could handle 15,000. What that chart doesn't take into account is when the cars are getting there, what are those peak AM and PM hours, and also what are the operations? How well are the traffic signals coordinated between agencies through the district and stuff like that? So the first number is just a high-level planning. What the study that you referenced for the actual development project gets into those fine details and really looks at the data that's out there for existing conditions, and also the proposed conditions. So that's why you're seeing a difference between, that one says it's overcapacity. The SRF study says we're at level of service of a C for all the intersections, which at a signalized intersection, that means you're waiting potentially up to 35 seconds to get through that intersection.
Well, I don't think anybody that goes through that area would dispute what Mr. Wood said, that in the PM peak, as people are heading back into Minneapolis because they either live close by, and it's best to get off at 50th and 100, or they prefer to go on 50th versus going around on the regional system. It is congested there on the PM peak, and I'm sure there's cut-through traffic as well. I think E.D. Rice talked about that. I am cognizant of the SRF report that said things would continue to function, if you look at the entire day, on a basis where, what did you say, level C?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. And when I'm there most times of the day, and I'm there off and on, it seems like it flows well. It's at PM peak is problematic.
Correct.
All right. Let's, anybody, does that prompt any thoughts on the transportation part of it? Now, Carrie T., you might need your help on this one. Roberta Costellano had some concerns about, that she was, felt pretty strongly about in terms of the density issues, and what the Met Council had approved in the past as part of our comp plan, and what's allowed down there now. And I think some clarification on that might be in order, and then some comp plan changes. We probably amended the comp plan, I'm sure we did for Nolan Maines. Went through a process with a public hearing of amending the comp plan, and then got the Met Council to approve it. Can you give us a little backgrounding on that?
That's correct. So with the Nolan Maines project, the density in the district was increased to 75 units an acre. Then with the Trammel Crowe project in the Grandview District, that's located within an area that's within this, what the 2008 plan calls the MXC, the Mixed Use Center District. It's the same at 50th and France as it is in Grandview. With that project, the density for both Grandview and 50th and France was increased to 100 units an acre. So the current comprehensive plan does allow 100 units per acre at 50th and France, and that was approved by the Met Council.
Okay. And if I could get Ms. Rice, or maybe Mr. Nemiroff to come forward again, and talk a little bit about, again, about why you felt comfortable adopting that MXC density level at 100 dwelling units per acre.
John, would you like to come up with this one, too? I have one answer, which I think in my mind addresses lots of the issues, but I'd like to let John speak first, and then maybe I'll...
Okay.
Maybe. The big issue for us was at one time, when we first started on the small-area plan, 50th and France was noted as a neighborhood node, and we all know that it's more than that. At first, it's more than that to all of Edina. It doesn't just belong to that particular corner, it belongs to, of the neighborhood, it belongs to all of Edina. And then it's not as a regional shopping area, and it is that. There are lots of restaurants there and shops there that attract folks from all over the region. So the beginning designation that we started with a year ago of a neighborhood node just didn't fit. So what did fit? And the only thing that did fit was the mixed-use piece that belonged there. The challenge on 100 units an acre, the parcels are too small. It's very, how difficult was it to put together Nolan Maines? It was very difficult, because they had to collect all those parcels to make it happen. How do you collect enough parcels to build a building big enough for 100 units an acre? Probably what you're talking about are some very small units that might be very dense for what they are, and if you aggregated them to an acre, but they'd never get there, would be 100 units an acre. But it's only going to be six or seven units that stack on top of what might have been a single-family house. So the 100 units an acre, I think, is, I think, was adopted because that was the most fitting designation for the district. It seemed to make sense, moving it away from a neighborhood node and moving it towards what it really was. So there's a start for you. I don't know where your advice is.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, that's an excellent start. So I think that, when I'm thinking about zoning, again, John and I are completely different experiences and areas. I think of three reasons for a zoning number. First of all, I think you're, I think we, as a city, by any zoning number are giving guidance to the Metropolitan Council. Second, I think that we're also, with this plan, I mean, we're constantly hearing about the cost of land in Edina in certain areas. 50th and France is one of the most costly areas in the Metropolitan Twin Cities. So you have to recognize what someone may want to do. And then third, which I think is kind of a big thing, for a lot of these issues, I think a lot of these issues are very meritorious, but I think what they are, they're prejudging what could come before us. I think what should happen is you want the city council to be able to get as many, or the city, to be able to get as many proposals as you can get. The more proposals that developers think they may get, the more likely you'll get a good one. Competition will bring a better proposal. I think that the current city council, I think future city councils will make a good decision on what the appropriate is, regardless of what the number is. Someone say something?
No. Go ahead.
And I also think that as time goes on, desires will change. And as we looked at the number, based on the historical, what's come before the city, based on the information regarding land value, based on the ability of the city to negotiate a better deal for itself if something comes, or to be able to pick a good proposal, like, to me, the, by the way, the converse of that is to not, is to tell developers, "We're not really accepting proposals." You'll get one proposal over a period of time perhaps, and that'll look great. The more competition, the better proposals. But my confidence in the city to pick a good proposal or no proposal is that's where I think the decision should write, should lay, and so that's how I got comfortable with it.
In our discussions, that's what we were, what we were about, that why are we, why are we arguing about 50th and France? Because it's a delightful place. How come it's a delightful place? How did that ever happen? Went back to 1974 and looked at what VRW did, and then looked at what city council did with that, and put in the ring road, and put in the parking. And you'll look at the ability and the talent that came to the table... And you'll look at the ability and the talent that came to the table to say, we're going to shape this thing. How many folks here remember Arby's as being the finest dining at 50th and France? That's what was there. And whose wisdom was it that said, we can do better than that? We can make this a more interesting place than that was. And so in large part, it seemed like in our discussions, the argument was get out of the way and let city council do their job for what they've done for the last 50 years at 50th and France and make it wonderful.
Allow them to.
Don't put strictures on it that says what you can't do, put possibilities on about what you can do. And when the pieces come to you to make those decisions, have faith that the wisdom of Edina and the talent of the council will come together and you'll do good stuff. Instead of saying, gee, let's put as many strictures in here as we can and say what you can't do, and then wonder 20 years from now, why we don't have light rail in Edina? Does that make sense, to not have that? No, it doesn't. Because there were strictures put in place that prevented things from happening. Let's get out of the way instead of get in the way. And I think that's where we came from. Is that...
So some folks have had concerns about, not the zoning code being at four stories, but, and I think you resolved that podium height issue by talking early on about the setback above two stories. And I think some folks had a concern about that early on, but that's been taken care of. So this notion, and I think Ms. Appeldorn expressed it well, was if you're going to have something like on page 34 where you've got some motivational language to come up with good ideas, maybe you can get a variance if you bring in something that is worthy above four stories, above what the code permits. Should that be a wall-to-wall sort of consideration for the entire district? Or once you get over against Maple Road or back against 49th, should there be some more limitation there? Because I think inherently, all of us think, yeah, no, we're not, we loaded the height in the middle for Nolan Maines because it was far away from single-family homes. And some of the, some of the projects we looked at as part of that RFP loaded all the height over on 49th. And we said, no, we're not doing that. We're not going there. And so somebody else came then with this idea of putting it in the middle. But there are, there are some risks of having this be a kind of a wall-to-wall, I'll say, through the whole district, this incentive sort of language. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm looking for the exact language. Perhaps Edie, you have it where we said...
Somebody mentioned page 34 and I'm looking at...
Well, no, I, yes. I, we, I'm looking for where we recommended that height transition to the neighborhood.
Oh, all right. Because it seems like you would have thought that through.
It's page 51, item four in the Land Use Community Design Goals.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Councilmember Stoneton.
Did you want to read that?
It seems like it says exactly what you, what you just said.
That is our recommendation.
Encourage the scale of buildings in the mixed-use core to transition from the center to the edge, with the greatest building heights towards the center of the district, such as along France Avenue. And comparatively smaller buildings near to the western and northern edges of the district. Require that redevelopment adjacent residential areas be designed with sensitivity to any impact on the property.
Which is also consistent with the cherry on page 37 that points to the north and the west and talks about building heights should respect adjacent residential uses to the west and building heights should respect adjacent residential uses to the north.
What page, remember something?
Page 37.
Page 7. Okay.
One of the pieces that I think was brought up at the tail end of the public discussion is what's going to happen in Minneapolis. And I think that's going to, I think you need to keep some ability to maneuver on a piece that you can't control.
That was Mr. Worth.
Some things are, will, may happen across the street. What does that mean? How does that, how do you respond to it? And not having our crystal ball is quite as clear as we'd have liked for it to be. Our effort was to say, give you the latitude to make the decision when the time comes. General Sports is moving out. What's moving in? What would that be? And how does Edina then respect that building and begin to work with it to keep it in scale and appropriate?
Another issue that was raised by some folks on Maple Road, several of them, starting with Dana Deutsch, who led a petition drive, was to redraw the boundary area to eliminate what they call the green strip. And I can see that green strip on some of the renderings in the proposed plan. I know US Bank owns the land. Nothing could ever happen with that strip, that 50-foot-wide strip, without the permission of the joining single-family property owners on Maple Road. Nonetheless, I mean, it seems therefore logical since US Bank owns the property that it stays in the plan. But could you explain why you thought that it should stay in there and address some of these concerns that folks on Maple Road have?
Speaking personally, I had two, two primary reasons for thinking it should stay in. One, as you stated, Mr. Mayor, is that it's owned by that same landowner. Anyone purchasing the land or looking at the land is going to be looking at the whole property. And second, I felt that despite what some residents want, I think that including it in the Small Area Plan and having a clear statement that this is not, that this land is subject to the easement is better, a much more conspicuous notice to people that come a year from now, two years from now. This easement buffer was the source of stress and, let's just say, metaphorical stub toes because it wasn't conspicuously known at the time of starting the Small Area Plan. John and I greatly wish we had known it at the start. And we think that the more conspicuous that, you could say, this isn't easement, this isn't developable land, is in everyone's interest. I guess third is, and this is probably more of a theoretical, I think I said two, but I guess three, I have three, more of a theoretical issue than a real issue, but it felt kind of, it feels kind of odd to me to start, to draw a boundary, but then start saying, well, this land that's not in the work study area, this is how we're going to deal with this land that's not in the study area. Because then, I think we tried to resist doing that throughout the course of the plan because there were ideas, oh, this land is not in the study area, let's do that. And that was just kind of just a general hygiene matter that we followed. And so that's kind of a third issue. If you take it out of the plan, I think you lose the conspicuousness of it. And I think then you start saying, well, we're going to start spot-regulating areas outside of the plan.
One piece that maybe needs to be clarified, just because it does, the consultant group, the consultant group lost their graphic design team. They ended up with other commitments and had to move on. We inherited a very talented fellow the day we had a meeting. And he did a graphic plan that took over the easement and showed a road and paths. And we said, no. It was his first day. It was an idea. The work group said, we're not doing that. It mistakenly got published on the website. We said, we're not doing that. And it was on the website. So all of a sudden, there's a conspiracy that we're out to blow up the world and put in a highway that we never wanted, that was simply part of the design process about getting from nowhere to somewhere with a new guy on the team that was doing his best. And now we've got an easement that some folks think, what we really want to do is put in a new landing strip for MSP because that would make sense. It was never part of the plan to do anything but have it be an easement. And the reason the mistake was made is there wasn't a document out there that said, see this? It's an easement. So the mistake got made. So if we take it out of the Small Area Plan, the next guy that's going to come along is going to say, what do you think we ought to do with this hunk of ground? So that's why we said it should stay in the Small Area Plan, so it's defined.
All right. This may be for Carrie Teague or even Roger. Martha Moffett had concerns about, you know, the variance process of letting a developer propose something that would allow a variation on the height of a building on the current code. But then she said something that was, I thought, quite bothersome. She was concerned about deals being made behind closed doors as referencing the process of obtaining a variance. And I think we should, we should make it clear how, if someone applied for a variance from what we require under the code, what that process is like. And I'll leave it to either of you to answer that question, because I don't want Ms. Moffett to go away thinking, stuff gets done here behind closed doors.
It certainly doesn't. In any, any development proposal that's likely to happen at 50th and France, we would probably start with the sketch plan. If somebody came in with some plans that didn't meet our code, we would start with the sketch plan to get feedback from the planning commission, the city council. So it would be posted on the website and begin to get that feedback. Should it develop into a specific proposal, whether it's a variance or a rezoning to PUD? In this district, we'd probably be looking at a rezoning to a PUD. We could get a variance request as well, but there would be public notification.
But regardless of whether it was a PUD or a variance, there'd be public notice and public opportunity to be heard.
That's correct.
If someone chose to go forward after a sketch plan review. Yeah. All right. And then Ms. Appeldorn also brought to our attention the fact that it doesn't help on pages nine and 10 to have a photo of a 10-story building. It's not a good idea. I don't know what, if any thoughts been given to that from a, from a team standpoint or a staff standpoint? I guess it's something we can take a look at. Her idea was that it might implicitly sort of encourage or inferentially encourage heightened density. So I think it's something worth taking a look at.
Mayor, I'd also just follow up on the variance issue.
Sure.
As I read the Small Area Plan, it doesn't even refer to a variance for height. That term is not used in the plan.
That term, variance, isn't used?
No.
Okay. And I was looking on 34 and just quickly and didn't see it there, where it was referenced. Heather Wallace was testifying about the fact that they weren't interested in additional connectivity to the north, the neighbors to the north weren't interested in additional connectivity. I wonder if you could walk back through that, that part of it again where you've, I think, I think Ms. Rice and Ms. Picard talked about it, but I don't, you know, I don't care who addresses the issue, but how would, what's the connectivity, proposed connectivity to the north, I guess is a fundamental question?
Christine?
If any.
Yeah, I think we talked about this a little bit. Our plan isn't proposing anything defined, and it's intentional. I think with new development, you're going to be looking for opportunities for that development to improve connectivity. But there's a variety of different ways that that can be done. And we've kind of listed quite a few in the connectivity principle as well as the access and movement. I think it's going to be very, very site-specific. I think it's going to be site-sensitive. And I think, going back to some of Ian's earlier comments, our plan is intended to provide additional opportunity for the city council to do their job and, and help assess whether or not a future development is meeting the intent of the plan without dictating exactly what that means, because it would be somewhat inappropriate to do without knowing exactly what's proposed. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, that helps. It may have some other comments as well. I think this issue came up earlier. I know I went, excuse me, I went over one day with Edie's husband to look at the proposed, this was after the drawing inadvertently got on the website and looked at the proposal that would take it through, I think, Brian Lambert's property. And, you know, you had topography challenges there and everything else, and it just didn't seem to be that, even if it was an idea that had some level of germination, that the council would never be interested in it. And obviously, you weren't either. But, so this connectivity issue on a broader basis, what would your comments be?
Tom and I were walking down there to get a sense of what was going on during the, at the tail end of this last glacial winter. And a couple came out of someplace back in White Oaks and they were headed towards Byerly's. I know because I was going to run an errand over there and I bumped into them when I got there. And they were walking down the street and there's no sidewalk. And they couldn't get over the ice. They couldn't get over the ice. He could, but she couldn't. She couldn't get there from here because there was no sidewalk. Now, it's not my job, it's not our job to say there should be a sidewalk there. That's something that you'll decide when the streets change. And it will come up as a question. Should we do that in the community? But if you ask me, there should be some connectivity between 50th and France and that neighborhood. And if you ask that woman who was trying to go to Byerly's on an ice walk on a pleasant afternoon and after the ice, she would say there should be some connectivity. We've got a problem with people parking construction trucks in that neighborhood right now, and that's going to be over in less than six months. What is that, does that mean it's going to go away? Does it mean the problem is going to go? I don't know. But I think you'll know and they'll know whether it's a problem. But I think connectivity is an issue. And you might decide not to have it because we don't want cars back there, or you might decide to have it because you can't get to Byerly's without breaking your neck trying to get over the ice. But that's why the streets and planning process that you've set up a long time ago works as well as it works. And people are involved in making that decision about that connectivity, but it should be there.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Nemiroff?
This is piling on, but I apologize. But, so, I'd like to reframe the issue a little bit. It's, the issue isn't, the issue as I've understood it all along, isn't whether or not there should be connectivity. I'd like to discuss it. The issue is, should there be a restriction against a pedestrian access between the district and the north, neighbor to the north? And the neighbors to the north are very unanimous that that's a bad idea, and I understand that. And I think that the, but the origins of this were, the drawing wasn't just the connectivity. The drawing showed the removal of a house. And when we saw that, we were, we never liked it and we, it had private meetings, we didn't like it. We saw it for the first time at a community meeting, kind of look at it and figure out what do you do now? I think it's a terrible idea to remove a house. Now, do we recommend to put something in this plan that for the next 10 years, we're against any kind of connectivity between the district to the north? And we weren't comfortable putting in that restriction, and that's for a few reasons. A few are very general and conceptual. First of all, Edina's vision is an increased, is a city of increased connectivity. And we think that that's an important principle, and we don't want to start saying, except here, or here, or here. As John and Christine said, this issue will, to re-characterize what John and Christine said a little bit, this issue will mature only if, and I think this may never happen, but it'll only mature if a developer brings a proposal that thinks that there's value in connectivity. going to be zero proposals or one proposal to do that. I don't think, and I think at that time, there'll be plenty of valid discussions. Now, the final general principle that I would raise, however, is one that came to me throughout this plan, which is only addressed very briefly in here, and it's not a land use issue, which is community engagement. Based on my conversations with neighbors, I think it's critical that if such a plan comes up, really any, any of the plans that are being discussed tonight, that we really want to have an A-game of community engagement, of notice, of capturing the messages, of disseminating the messages, and of disseminating feedback to the messages. And, you know, I, I don't think we want to hear someone come up and say, "Well, I live right next door and I didn't hear about that." I think we want to figure out a way to avoid that. One final thing on the pedestrian connectivity, though, that came up tonight is, or two things. One is, the work group, I think, was fairly unanimous that we view the future, just like the city of Edina, we view the future as being one of pedestrian and bike connectivity. One speaker came up tonight to speak about the problems with traffic and how that makes pedestrians, the pedestrian access is currently less safe. One positive of the pedestrian connectivity that was shown is that is a much safer pedestrian connectivity to the district than the two that currently exist from the north. One going along France Avenue by Walgreens. I run there and I've got my head on a swivel and I, you know, and I think I'm pretty agile. And I've heard from other people that they don't like walking on that street, particularly in winter. The other one is to go around the district and go on Maple and then go up 50th, which is adequate. It's longer and you're on 50th and you have to cross by, between the bank and D'Amico's. But we don't think that, we're not recommending any kind of connectivity, but we aren't, what we aren't doing is saying, "Don't put connectivity here. We think it's premature to do that." Thank you.
Thank you. One other matter was that I had on my list were parking concerns. They were, over on Maple Road, they were concerned about, you know, traffic spillover as, as there's potential redevelopment in the 50th and France area. What are we going to do to be mindful of not pushing traffic into the, into the neighborhoods? Not only traffic, but parking is what I meant to say, not traffic.
Well, I think with regard to the Maple Road issue, I think that has now gone to Chad and Kerry perhaps. I don't know if it's reached you yet, but I, I, I think there are two concerns on Maple Road that I think we need to think, maybe three. Let me, let me start with the two material ones. I start with the one, general one. As Edie and others have mentioned, the construction of Nolan Maines has shifted traffic. And I will tell you from my conversations, neighbors feel like the consequences of the closure of Market Street, West 49th and Half Street, weren't thought through enough. I'm going to tell you that I know other people in the city, with the city and elsewhere think that, yes, they were thought through enough. I'm not taking a position, but I think they feel that that wasn't thought through enough. Stop that point there. But since then, what's happened is there has been an increase in traffic on 49th Street. One day, and I spoke into two neighbors about this event, one day someone came going west on 49th Street, you know, trying to avoid 50th and France, took a left on Maple, saw some cars, took the turn too fast, and had a bad accident, I guess. And that really got, that, that, that made the situation more concrete for a lot of neighbors about the effects of traffic and the effects of construction on their neighborhood. And they want the city to think about what they can do to slow cars down there, to avoid another rollover. I spoke with one neighbor who said, "I ran out and I talked to the, to the driver in her car and I felt like it was just luck that she wasn't badly injured." And I think that's a fair characterization. So that's one concern the neighbors had, is the consequences and thinking about what consequences a future development will bring and how to plan for them. Living on, by the way, that's kind of personal to me, living on a street one block off Wooddale. I know when Wooddale was under construction many years ago, our road turned in, our street turned into a major road. I know how that goes. The second is, some long-term residents of Maple Street say that certain times at rush hour, cars are parked on the, on Maple, right on 50th, on both sides. And sometimes people try to take left turns to go north on Maple and they're, they're heading east on 50th, they want to take a left turn to go north on Maple. There's cars on both sides and they, people that live right there, they, wow, you know, people are kind of, it gets, they, they perceive that the driving is a little risky at that point, both to the driver, to the cars, and to anyone else coming around. And they're, they're wishing something to be done about that. Now, that's obviously, these are obviously subset of, subset, you know, subset issues to the larger concerns that neighbors have about tra, traffic. One other recommendation I didn't mention earlier that's in our plan I wanted to bring up is, we are recommending, and this came on neighborhood, from neighborhood feedback, we do think it would be a good idea, after Nolan Maines is constructed, to do kind of a, to do a traffic examination, to see whether the projections, you know, maybe a year later, after things have died down and traffic patterns have resumed, to, to get a sense of what happened. Were the projections accurate? Were they, were we under, were we over? We think, we think, you know, that's something neighbors are asking for, and we think that will actually add value to further plans. Traffic as a whole, I'd like to address that for a second. There are different judgments about whether the traffic on 50th is good or bad, and same on France Avenue. People have been saying traffic was bad since at least 1939, and traffic isn't ideal. I've been in places where traffic is worse. I've been in places where traffic is better. As Christine and Edie mentioned, much of the traffic is through traffic. In my brief discussions, I, I, I sort of agree with people that we haven't proposed a solution, and I, I sort of don't. We have, early in the process, this came out in our first committee meeting, we right away went, met with the transportation commission and said, "Look, this isn't our skill. We're not traffic people. This is an issue that the community has. We really encourage you to look at it." I've, I've personally had a long conversation with the chair of the transportation commission. When Mark Nolan was the city liaison, he and I spent a lot of time talking about it, and he spent time talking to the chair of the transportation commission. I like to think they have more expertise than I do as a, as a, as a medical device attorney to figure out an answer to traffic, also within the scope of a small area plan. We feel like we just, it was well beyond our scope to figure out how to solve this perceived concern. Second, I personally have floated solutions, and I know other people, I know Bill Nuenendorf has floated solutions, and others have also floated solutions when the issue of traffic has come up. And some of the solutions that have been floated, people are like, "Don't, don't do that." You could widen 50th, right? Again, medical device guy here, software guy, not a traffic person. So, maybe you could, you could get, you could get more through if you widen, but then you're taking trees out, you might be affecting people's houses. It's what they did in Richfield on 66th Street. But Richfield, that might, it's, it's not, it's apples and oranges. Fifty, on, on France Avenue, I know similar conversations have had with store owners who are concerned about parking and traffic and cars and, and they say, "Well, we can take the front end, we could take some footage off the front of your store." And, "No, no, don't do that." Other than that, I feel like this issue is over my skill level to deal with. So I don't know if I agree or disagree that traffic is bad. I know that I've actually had to take that left turn on Maple. I've had to go down Fran, I've had to go east on 50th during rush hour and then go north on Maple. It isn't fun. I think these are all things that need to be balanced as things go forward. I, I don't know if we can stop anything at 50th and France until there's a solution to the perceived issue of traffic. I think that would be, I think, I think, I think, I think all these issues that come up tonight, city of Minneapolis, these are all things that need to be balanced when something comes up. And it's hard to just stop and say, "We aren't going to do anything until we have a solution for everything that's a concern." And that's probably more than you're asking for, Mr. Mayor, but those are my thoughts on traffic.
All right. Thank you. Did I miss some issues that people brought up? Anybody else have anything on the, on their list? Yes, member sign, please.
Just one, I want to, I want to clarify one of the issues, and Kerry, I think you can probably walk us through this. My understanding of, this is what, is it currently designated as a mixed-use center?
Correct.
When was that designation created?
That was 2008, as part of that comprehensive plan.
So it was a mixed-use center. So we may have thought of it as a neighborhood, no, but it's been classified in the comprehensive plan as a mixed-use center.
Correct.
And Grandview is another mixed-use center.
That's correct.
So when we made a change to the comprehensive plan for Grandview, to bring that to 100 units per acre, it automatically imposed that density range in the 50th and France area.
Correct.
So in the, in the plan, in the discussions, I assume there was really no kind of discussion about whether it was best to have 100 units an acre, 90 units an acre, 80 units an acre. Obviously Nolan Maines is 73 or 67, or I've seen various numbers, but am I correct in my assumption that there wasn't, there wasn't really a discussion of what's the right number? There was discussion about density, but no discussion, it just had happened by virtue of a, an amendment in another location? Correct?
Well, I believe that's true, yeah.
All right. So it wasn't a big scandal, it was in plain sight?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that because there's, there's some confusion about how we got to 100 units an acre, and a lot of folks have focused on this 100 units an acre. I have a lot of ambivalence about the density measurements as a reflection of what kind of neighborhood you're going to have anyway, because you could have, you know, you could have two buildings that look exactly the same, that are exactly the same volume, and they could have wildly different density. So it, I get that it is useful to the Met Council for sewage and transportation, and folks in the audience have made a, a point about it may be relevant to, to traffic, to how many trips are generated, et cetera. But in any event, that wasn't really the focus of this group, was the particular density unit. They were in favor of some density, but they didn't arrive at a particular density, Marla.
I believe that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Member Fisher, any questions at this point in time or comments?
No questions. Are we at the comment phase?
If we have no other questions, okay, I think we're at the comment stage. If you want to lead off, you're welcome to. Or if you prefer to wait.
Or I could wait. It doesn't matter.
Just jotting a bunch of notes here. So it's interesting because when I read through this plan, my immediate reaction was, wow, they're not really, not really changing much, right? I mean, it's, for the most part, it's sort of holding steady. But that's not what I'm hearing in emails and in the commentary tonight. And I want to just address that a little bit. But before I get into this, I do want to thank the working group. You really did a terrific job. The document is actually a really good document. Now, could we make some tweaks to it? Maybe, maybe based on this conversation. But I actually, you know, I kind of feel like a couple of things that happened tonight really struck me. And this whole meeting tonight started with these three young women from the high school talking about the future that they want to see in Edina and in their world. And here we are talking about a plan as though it's a mandate for change. And in fact, it's really a guidance, you know, so, and, and I think it's part of the confusion that happens when we do these small area plans. We're not trying to promote development. We're trying to make sure there's some guidance if and when development comes to us in this area. And what struck me when I read the plan is, it's a very tempered approach here. It's saying, "Look, we don't need to change, you know, we're not changing the height. The height limits are what they are. They're four stories today, and you're saying keep them at four stories." I'm going to come back to that just for a minute because I think we could tweak that language just a little bit. The density is what it is today. You're not promoting more density in this area. So I'm just going to go through just some of my notes, and I'm going to cover the, the buffer and just what my opinion is on the buffer, the density, the height, and then the traffic. But before I get to that, Mr. Lorenz, you talked about the imbeciles who bicycle during the winter. And I'm going to go back to these three young women who are going to see a different world than we all see today. But it's already happening, right? I have 95 people in my office in the north loop of Minneapolis, and we have a bicycle room where people have to keep their bicycles. And in mid-winter, all winter, that room is packed. So if 95 people can pack a bicycle room with 15 bicycles all winter long, it tells me that there are a lot of imbeciles out there, if we go by your definition. I actually think, I think the world we live in is changing and we have to recognize and change with it. And that really applies even as we think about the 50th and France area. So, you know, the, just talking about the buffer for a second, I, you know, the, as I understand it, it was about a few years before the 1930, or 1974 plan, so let's just say it's a 45-year agreement that's in place. I, I sort of fall on the, I, I agree with Ian when you said, if we word it very clearly in this document that, hey, there's an easement here, this is a buffer, that's actually an advantage because it's a 2019 document that reminds everyone that there's a 45-year agreement already that's still in place and we recognize it and respect it and want it to continue. Because I can tell you, the, the knowledge goes away pretty quickly. 10 years from now, and we're talking about some development proposal, and none of us are here to talk about it, it's nice to look back at a 2019 plan that reminds us of a 1974 plan because the 1974 plan is just going further and further back into history. So that's just, you know, and I understand there were some missteps and everything, frankly, partly because of that. And, you know, that's, that's my opinion on that. I do want to say also about the buffer, this idea, it is useful in a conversation here, this idea that as long as we stay out of the plan area, we don't have to deal with any of the problems in the plan area. And it's back to my point, the plan area isn't actually promoting development. So like, because there's a boundary, there's not going to ever be a developer that says, "Oh, shoot, you know, I, I'm not going to propose anything outside of that boundary." The boundary is imaginary. It's strictly for the small area plan. A developer can propose development anywhere in the city. We're just recognizing that, you know, this is an area that we want to study. So whether the buffer's in the boundary, outside of the boundary, you know, it's, it's kind of irrelevant in a way, other than we're recognizing that we should respect a buffer. The height, I think the, you know, we're all in the plan, and I want to say it's on page 34, where we talk about the height. Let's see if I have it here. You know, we're saying it's four stories, we're saying, and this is really probably one of the most important parts of the plan, in my opinion, is that we're saying we should be respecting and actually stepping down potentially where we're up against single-family homes. But, and, and that's, you know, architecturally, it's, it's just saying, we have to respect those edge conditions and that the, the greatest height would be in the middle. I think instead of saying, and, and here's the thing, we can't tell people not to request a variance. That's part of the legal process that any developer can go through. We can say yes or no to a variance, but we can't predetermine what the answer has to be. In other words, we can't say here today, "You must say no to variance requests." However, the way, I get people's consternation here, the way this is worded. The way this is worded is suggesting that, "Come on, just make the request and here's how you get them approved." We don't have to word it that way. And I think subtlety does matter sometimes. It could say, instead of this, this plan propos, this says right now, this plan, this is on page 34, "This plan proposes that the city should consider granting height bonuses to developers who do this, this, and this." We should say, we could say, "The city, the city should not consider granting any variances unless at a minimum, a developer is going to do whatever." It's a different way to look at it. It's a different way, you know, I think we all agree, it's a serious thing. If you're going to grant a variance, there better be a good reason for it. And what, what are sort of the... It's a different way to look at it. It's a different way, you know, I think we all agree, it's a serious thing. If you're going to grant a variance, there better be a good reason for it. And what, what are sort of the, you know, what's the bar on what we consider good reasons? That's just a subtlety, but I think it's an important one. The density, I already talked about, that we're not, you're not proposing a change from where it is today. And I would argue, as Councilmember Staunton mentioned, I just hate density. I hate the whole discussion about density, because it's so irrelevant to how we actually experience things. And you gave a good example. If we have a commercial development, there's no way to measure density of a commercial development, so I guess that doesn't create traffic, or it doesn't matter. Residential, we measure with density, because it's just a measure. But we already know, in the plan, it talks about residential is the least traffic-intensive use we could put at 50th and France. So we're getting hung up on the wrong things. And there's a diagram, I'm not going to remember what page it's on, but it shows, just conceptually, that there could be a park-like space, a green space, on the corner of Halifax and 50th, right? And I know it's just diagrammatic, we're not trying to design here. But let's just say, on that block, that we wanted a park-like space. Well, by definition, we would have higher density by, by making the building take up less space on the block, so it's, on the smaller site that we're going to have that housing, it will have higher density than if we just spread it over the whole block and wiped out any potential for green space, pedestrian area, whatever. So we would have met our goal of lower density, but really have done nothing different. It'd be the same number of apartments, or whatever, but we would have kept a magic number. So I just, I feel like if we focus more on where's appropriate height, appropriate uses, and just not worry so much about the density, we'd be better off. And, and the fact that you're not changing it makes me feel that we're kind of doing that. And then the last thing is traffic. You know, and there have been comments about, we didn't address the traffic. Hey, we can't solve the pass-through, this is a crossroads, and it's been identified that much of this traffic is what's moving through this district. And if our choice is to just not allow any more development to happen at 50th and France, that's not going to help our cross-through traffic problems. And again, this plan isn't proposing development, it's saying, here's what happens when it comes to us. And it's going to happen over time, we're going to get more development opportunities. And by mixing the uses, it's the best, single-best thing we can do to minimize traffic impacts. Every person that lives in the 50th and France area is actually creating less traffic, because they're going to walk to that store. They are going to sling stuff over their shoulder and walk back from the grocery store, and the dentist, and, and the bakery. And, and it's been proven across this country, the very best thing we can do there, for all of us, is to mix it up. People living there have our retail, and that's just a fact. And so when I read through the plan, I thought, wow, this group of residents of Edina, business owners in Edina, went through this process, they figured it out, they listened to people, and they put a pretty reasonable plan on the table. Now, I'd be open to a couple of those tweaks in language, I'd be curious how the, the team feels about that. But overall, what I saw in that plan seems to make a lot of sense. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Can I respond to Mike?
Sure.
Mike, I think your changes are great.
So let me, let me pick up kind of where Mike left off. I think, I think the first thing to recognize is that this is the fourth small-area plan we've now done, and the last we're bringing to a conclusion in the last year. And one of the things that's different about this one is that there's not a project pending while this is going on. At 44th and France, there was, everybody was aware there was something in the background. At 70th and Cahill, at the last minute, there was a potential project people were worried about. Southdale, there was a 7200 project. This one, the one that's looming over it, exists already. It's in place, and we're waiting to see how it turns out. So I think part of what we're hearing from folks is this kind of cognitive dissonance of, we're in the middle of a project, and now you're proposing to do even more, before we even see how this project settles in. And that's not what we're doing. We're trying to complete a comprehensive plan update, which we need to do every 10 years to try to chart the future. And I can understand how, when you're in the middle of having cars tip over on your street, or construction vehicles parked in front of your property, or all the other chaos, the pile-driving, et cetera, that's been going on there for a year, how the notion of talking about what we're going to plan there next sounds crazy. And that's not what we're doing. And I will tell you, as one member of a five-member council, I'm not interested in another project here until we see how Nolan Mayne settles in. We're going to see how it settles in, we're going to see how it feels, we're going to see how we live in it, and then we'll figure out what to do next. But when it comes time to do something next, we're going to need some guidance. And I echo Councilmember Fisher's evaluation of this as being a, really, a pretty modest kind of approach. It sizes up a lot of different things, and does a lot of really interesting things. You know, I'm, I'm, one of the things that I really liked about it was the notion along 51st Street, and it didn't get much discussion, of some rap housing, townhome-type housing that faces the street, that creates more of a pedestrian feel, some tree lining there, another crossing point, so that those folks south on Halifax, or into the neighborhoods to the south, have a safer access to what we're trying to make is a pedestrian-friendly environment. And I also, you know, well, I'll talk about the, the height, you know, I, I, I came away from the agreement, or from the document, feeling like the consensus was, if there is height, that it needs to be closer to the center, and as you taper towards the sides, that's where it goes lower. And, and I pointed out some provisions in it that I think reflect that. There's also in the, actually, in the implementation section on page 77, there's even something that talks about zoning regulations. The city will consider setback requirements for new buildings developed in the district to regulate, regulate stepbacks for buildings, A, greater than two stories that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. So I think we need to, we need to make it clear, if it's not, that we want the height in the center and not at the edges. The, I, I agree with Mike about the buffer. I get the concern, but frankly, there is nothing we can do in this plan that will change the legal viability of that easement. It is what it is. But the whole problem, as Commissioner Hamilton pointed out, that we ran into here, is because somebody didn't know about it. And now by putting, I would think if you have that easement benefiting your property, you would want to announce, you'd want to plaster it everywhere you could find to plaster it. And having it in this plan is going to remind everybody that it's there, and it can't go away until those property owners say it can go away. We talked a little bit about the density, the traffic. Much like Councilmember Fisher, I, you know, this traffic is a tough issue, and I think that the plan recognizes that it's a tough issue, and has actual implementation steps. And if you go back to what I said about Nolan Mayne's, I think, and, and Commissioner Nemirov talked about the fact that we'd like to do a study a year after Nolan Mayne's. It's actually in there, it's in the, it's in the implementation, or it's in the end of the transportation section. There's a paragraph that says, a year after, we want to do a transportation study. And it also says, if there's any development, there needs to be a transportation study to, to tackle that. There's also things in there about exploring the idea of a transit circulator, so that there's ways to get there from within the community that aren't on, in a car. And coordination of traffic signals. We need to keep working on this. This is not the end, it's the beginning on the, on the traffic stuff. So the final thing I'd say is, I have a, I have a client, a former client who was a mayor of the city that I work for, and he, he used to, when we were, when we were working on negotiating agreements with someone, he would, he would quote an old lawyer friend of his, his lawyer's friend was Arlie. And Arlie had a, had a saying, that you can't do a good deal with a bad guy. And the point was that nothing you can put on paper will ever make anybody do anything, unless you have trust between the two parties. And I think the saddest thing about the place we're at in this community right now is that we don't trust each other. We have people who come in who are concerned, but are willing to accuse us of cronyism, of scandal, of trying to basically screw them. And there's no, there's no amount of changes we can make to this document that are ever going to fix that. And so I, I don't know what to do about that, other than to say, at some point, we have to chart a course together, and we have to say that we trust each other to do the right thing as things come along. And I, I can't thank the folks enough who live, live in our community, or own property in our community, who put in countless hours just to make their community a better place. Nothing other than that, just to make the community a better place. And I, for one, am really supportive of the work that you've produced, and, and will support it going forward, even if there's a few tweaks that go along with it. I think it will make our community better going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Staunton? Member Brenner?
Thank you. So when I read this document, I came away at the end of it thinking, I didn't read anything I didn't know. Which, in this case, is a good thing. I think Kevin pointed out some very important points, and that is that several other small-area plans, the process almost seemed more complicated because there was a project waiting to happen. And at Wooddale and Valley View, it was Edina Flats, that was kind of in the background waiting to happen in that one. So, you know, you're producing a small-area plan for the future of the area, wanting it to be neutral, wanting it to be a very high-level plan, yet you have a developer with a case full of plans that he'd like to talk about. And it is complicated, and you want the front wheels of the bus to be on the front of the bus, and not vice versa. So you want to keep order in what's going on, and, and you want to get to the end with a good small-area plan, and ultimately, with a good development. So for me, the, the important points of a small-area plan are the principles. The traffic's around that, the density's around that, the, the transitions, all of those things are the things that happen based on the principles. And this small-area plan might have 10 of them. But no matter what happens here, whether it stays the same as it is today, or it evolves, it is those principles that will guide the future of this area. So for me, as long as we have the principles, and they are well-defined, we're fine. Now, looking at 44th and France, one, one tool that we had while creating Edina's 44th and France Small Area Plan was the Linden Hills Small Area Plan, done by, previously done by the city of Minneapolis. So when you're looking at adjacent properties, and what, how those adjacent properties are being guided at 44th and France, all we had to do was look at what Minneapolis put together for Linden Hills. We don't have that here. In the entire list of small-area plans in the city of Minneapolis, 50th and France is not one. So having a conversation about 50th and France with the city of Minneapolis can be challenging. I hear the climate is warmer. So hoping that, that we can get some conversations, because there's a great deal of stress placed on the public realm of 50th and France by the shops and property owners and customers that are in the Minneapolis part of this district. So I'll just put that out there, that, that hopefully, we can get some conversation with them. That doesn't say that, that slows us down on the small-area plan for the Edina portion of it, but it certainly, this small-area plan will inform Minneapolis on how the adjacent properties to the east ought to interact. And now it's formalized by being in a document, once we get there. So I want to talk about the buffer. And the, the buffer area is an important strip of property. And it is my understanding, Manager Neal, and correct me if I'm wrong, or anybody to my left, that that piece of property is jointly owned by the city and by Lund's Holdings. Is that true? Who owns that property?
The bank.
It's the U.S. Bank property.
Right.
The bank owns the property.
Oh, the bank entirely? The city doesn't?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, there's just an easement over the bank's property.
All right.
So we don't have any rights to it? The bank owns it, and the rights are to the property owners who are joining it?
Okay. And that is put in legal writing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So when the bank decides they want to do something with their property, they know that that property is provided as a protective buffer between their U.S. Bank property up to the curb, and the Maple Road residents?
You're asking if the bank knows that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the bank knows that.
Okay. So, you know, I came here thinking I was going to recommend that we just, why don't we just take the buffer out of the small-area plan, since it's not part of what is going to change in the future? But I am convinced that it is in the best interest of the folks along Maple Road to have the buffer in the small-area plan where it is well-defined and identified. So that whatever does develop in this small area, should it affect that piece of property, that easement is defined as being green space. Now, going through the draft, there are pages where, and I believe it was Mrs. Deutsch who mentioned on such-and-such a page, that, so the, that the buffer area is defined as mixed-use center. And another one, it's defined another way. However, it is, honestly, it's red or pink, but it's not green in all locations. So take a look at page 30, take a look at page 32. The, the buffer begins to be green and identified as green open space on page 37. Prior to that, it just, it's an editing, editing change, it just, but it needs to be consistent. So that when someone looks at the outline of the project area, that that area is consistently identified as open space. It's just an edit. You know, and, and I've said, when I look at documents, and I sit here and look at documents, I get into the weeds. I'm a technical writer, so I get into the weeds. So I do have some things I'll send you. But I guess in conclusion, in my comments, 50th and France has always been and will always be an area of potential change. It will always be an evolutionary area. Shops will change, property owners will change. You're going through some significant change right now, partly because of the enormous change in how retail works. change in how retail works. What I'm hoping is that, and I've visited with some of the property owners, and this is totally outside the realm of what we're talking about tonight, but hoping that we get, you know, businesses that come in there and attract people to come and stay. Stay for the day, do some work here. And then while you're here, eat here, or go there, shop there. And it could be the best thing for the area. It's hard for me not to move there, because I do get excited about it. So, in, you know, just in wrapping up, I do see this small-area plan, and any small-area plan, as a set of principles. It really is something that you or I, as a developer, would take and say, what can I do here? What's the potential here? What a great location this is. It's got history, it's got people already who love to be there, what can I do there to be part of that? And I think this is the groundwork that will help that individual find where they can do, what they can do. Now, there is something in the document that's labeled a height bonus. I hate that word. The other night, we were talking about the public finance policy, and it was public finance incentives. And I said, no, no, get rid of that word. There aren't incentives. This is a partnership. It's not an incentive. This is something that when a developer and the city work together to come up with a project in this area, it is a project. It is a partnership. And if all works well, then the development works, and the public realm is improved. And there shouldn't be a bonus on either side for it, because it's very expensive. The bonus is to the public. It really isn't to the developer. So, I would like to rethink how that wording is approached, and how that intent is expressed, so that it is more of a partnership. In my last paragraph, I will echo everybody else's, everybody else's advice about flexibility, and that's really what, I mean, that's how Nolan Maines is happening, that's how the condominiums at 50th and France happened. It's flexibility, it's finding, you know, every one of those principles are principles, but they are applied in different ways, and we need, as partners, to find a way to make it work for all involved. So with that, I will say thank you to the Small Area Planning Group. Thank you, thank you. It's an enormous lift to do something like this, to walk around 50th and France and start saying, what am I going to write about this? What are we going to put in writing about this to formalize the principles that have already existed for 100 years? But they are being formalized here to set us forward for the next year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Rendell. Member Anderson?
Thank you. Could I just, a couple of questions I have before commenting, and one of them, I think, is just a restatement, and maybe our city attorney will comment on this. The easement, the buffer, it's an easement in perpetuity. There's no really circumstances under which it could be challenged. Is that an accurate statement?
That is an accurate statement.
Yeah, thank you. Because I just think, I hope that that reassures Mrs. Deutsch, because that's where we are with this. And I think it just can be a simple matter of accepting the fact that no one's going to fiddle with that, and it's really not under fire. I, too, want to thank the Small Area Study Group for what I know was a tremendous amount of hard work and effort, so, you know, thank you for that. You know, we talk a lot about development here tonight, and I couldn't agree more with Commissioner, or Member Staunton, in saying, we can just let this breathe a little bit after Nolan Maines is completed, and we do a traffic study, another one that's called for, we can take a look at it. The traffic's a huge issue, and everybody recognizes that. But that's been being kicked around for so long, that it's, we won't come to a conclusion on that tonight, other than, I would just like to add the fact that the circulator line, and adding at least options to move up and down 50th, and really connecting nodes around, is really something to strongly consider. We have a small attempt at that right now on the Daisy Line, they may not be the carrier in the future, but I think that it just needs to be expanded, because I can't come to any other conclusion than at least trying to resolve it in some way, and hoping that that can meet with a level of acceptance. Because convenience, the convenience of the area is, I think, a key consideration. The attraction of the area has to be, how easily can you get there? If you can't get there, you don't go there. And there's been a lot of folks over the last several months that have just chosen not to go there. If you're west of 100, you probably don't try very hard these days. Maybe that'll change, and people will come back. So I think parking there will be a concern into the future, and the ease of getting there. We talk about developers, but you know, the elephant in the middle of the room is Lund's Holdings, because they really kind of control a lot of what happens there. You know, Commissioner Hamilton talked about the availability of sites. So what do you do with these smaller sites? And I haven't heard anyone talk about how desirable it would be to go to eight to 10 stories, and so, it's unlikely that that would happen, but that's, if you said we have smaller sites, then we almost have to do that in order to get very much density, and nobody wants to deal with it. So I don't know that that has to be dealt with at length, but we currently have a four-story maximum. And in fact, the plan calls for stepbacks after two stories. So it seems as if, if anything that happens there stays at around four stories, it's really conducive and would relieve a lot of the concerns of the neighbors and in the neighborhood. Is that possible? It's possible, but not probable, given our 100 units per acre designation. A question for Mr. Teague would be, what exactly is the current zoning there? I see on the implementation page, I'm on page 77, I see on the implementation page that we are going to move from mixed-use neighborhood commercial to mixed-use center.
The current zoning in, really, with the exception of the PUD with the Nolan Maines project, the remaining parcels are zone planned Commercial District 2, which is a mixed-use district. It allows retail and housing.
Yeah, okay. So, the PUD was created at 75 units, but the current zoning doesn't really call for 100, but it would if it moved to the MXC zoning, correct?
There's no proposal to change the zoning.
Okay.
The zoning ordinance would stay the same.
We're currently at MXC there.
Right.
And that calls for 100 units.
That's the designation in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Yes, okay, thank you. All right. Well, I think it would be, when Commissioner Staunton talks about trust in the community, and, you know, a lot of what we hear tonight is really, as you mentioned, lack of trust. And that's kind of, that's what comes forward. There's a lot of emotion around 50th and France. It's highly valued. People love it, identify it, identify with it. I heard Mr. Smith at one of the meetings that I attended over there, talk about the fact that people identify 50th and France as the heart of Edina. And I think that's probably true. People identify with it. So, there's a lot of emotion, as a result, that comes out of it, and we're hearing that. But there's lots of ways, I think, that zoning could be reworked here. If I look at page 34, I believe, and I see that, let me just get to that to be certain, that's the page. Page 33, excuse me. So, you know, when I look at page 33, and I take a look at the maximum density of 100 units per acre, when I move on to page 35, and I see the next table on table four, there's nothing here that is at 100 units an acre. If you excluded the Abidore, the Trammell Crowe Development, or the Guitar Center site, we don't have anything that's like that. I look at 7250 France, that's, I believe, 72, and I think that Nolan Maines is 67, although that's been kicked around a little bit tonight, up to 72, but still, that's where we are. The PUD calls for 75 units an acre that encompasses that. I think that one solution here, if we really wanted to restore trust, or at least relieve concerns, would be to say, we could see an MXC 1 and an MXC 2, and limit using MXC 1 for our other areas, using MXC 2 for 50th and France, and then limiting our units per acre here. What we all know, it's no secret, the council has the ability to grant variances. So, whether they're variances for height or variances for density, that's something we're going to consider one way or the other. So I think that if you, if we said, the average here is 49 on table four, that might be a good workable number to say that could be MXC 2. Maybe it's higher than that. Maybe, you know, maybe the PUD is 75, and we say 75. I think we have a lot of latitude here, and so if we want to really reach out, if we really want to say, let's resolve the stress, we can do it that way. So I would recommend that. I think that would be a good approach. We just very recently went from 12 to 30 units, and I don't see any reason why we can't create another zoning capacity to do that. Last, and I think maybe the most important, if you consider traffic part of the infrastructure, then, okay, traffic's an issue, but I think the infrastructure overall in the area is probably an issue going forward. I think there were brownouts there, even last summer. I don't know exactly what the stormwater sewer lines are like right now, but I just think those things really need to be explored before you can say, well, let's do this, or let's do that. So I think we have a long way to go, one way or the other. I think that you've done a great job in creating a vision, or the potential for what can happen there. And that's all that any of our small-area studies really do anyway. We just create a vision, we create a study, we think about this is possible. So none of this is going to happen next year or the year after. It's all potentially happening in the future. And because we're a community in transition, and a society in transition, then there is going to be growth there, there's going to be development. The mayor earlier tonight talked about managed growth, and growth that is positive for the community, and I think we can achieve that there. And I think we can do it with the guidelines that are laid out in this plan. The only other comment that I would make is, if we begin early on to develop guidelines for public realm improvements, then that doesn't need to be a negotiation down the road. When the developer comes forth and says, this is what I'd like to do, then I would as soon know now, or have an idea, of what public realm improvement should be. So the main point I want to make is, I think we can make a change in zoning that would relieve a lot of pressure. The table suggests 49, it could be a bit more, but we're not going to probably put anything more than that in here anyway, or not much more. And if we did, and if we considered it, then we can grant that variance at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson. First, I want to go back to the very beginning, and I took some time to thank everybody that worked on the study team, but I want to go back and call you all out by name, starting with the residents first, and then moving to the planning commissioners. But Mark Arnold, Jen Augustin, John Breitinger, Patrick Haas, Thomas Kuhn, Christine Picard, Edie Rice, thank you all so much for doing all this wonderful work. And then for your leadership, Ian Nemiroff and John Hamilton from the planning commission, more of our residents stepping up and showing folks tonight, I think, both in the audience and folks that'll watch us on television and video, how blessed we are to have such skilled folks in our community, both on the work team and leading the work team. So, thank you very much. One of the things that's in the vision, and I think it's on that page 34, too, I just wanted to touch briefly on, and we talked about it a little bit upstairs, talk about high-quality materials getting used at 50th and France. I'd like to see something in here maybe defining those materials, and the percentage of use of those materials, and whatever we see. And then to back up just for a second, Member Rendell touched on this with respect to the principles that guide, anybody that comes into the district thinking about doing something, I think not only will those developers, prospective developers, find comfort in that, in those principles that they can follow, but I think every resident in Edina ought to find comfort in those principles that were created by this working group. For me, this small-area plan, you could hear it in the conversations of John Hamilton and Ian Nemiroff, what they really did here was try to maximize the creative capabilities of the city, or any council that's sitting, at the time a project comes forward for potential development, or redevelopment in the 50th and France area. I read it that, you know, by allowing, leaving the density numbers the way they are, where it's this mixed-use category, it says, it doesn't say 100 units per acre, it says up to 100. You're trying to create opportunities for us to evaluate each project on its own merits, but give us the flexibility of kind of moving with that density number up to a certain level. We've already got Nolan Maines at 67 or 70-plus building units per acre. I don't think we'd want to be below that. I get into the same mindset as my colleagues Staunton and Fisher with regard to density. It's really a difficult unit of measurement, and I just as soon leave it the way it is, leave the code consistent, despite the concerns, I think the legitimate concerns raised by Member Anderson. Traffic, you know, we've talked for some time about developing some volume and speed strategies. I think folks have mentioned that, once we get post-Nolan Maines, that we take a breather and look and see what we can do with respect to traffic, see what those numbers look like. On page 34, Member Fisher had some ideas. I understand the concerns of some of the residents there with that language, that seems to encourage somebody coming forward with something that's greater than four stories in height. But when I look at what you're saying that is proposed that they have to do under items 1 and 2, I look at those subset paragraphs, implementing private realm improvements, and assist the city with the cost of implementing public realm improvements, that's kind of what we did with Nolan Maines. These almost seem to be elements of any project, for me, that would come in, or proposed coming into the 50th and France area, regardless of whether they were within the existing code from a height and density standpoint. So that I'd like to think about a little bit more. It almost seemed to me, like, when I looked at page 34, and was thinking about the concerns that were raised by some of the residents, that you could almost take out that second and third sentence in the first paragraph, and so it would read, other than recommending that the four-story height limit in the zoning code should remain in place, this small-area plan does not prescribe building height. plan does not prescribe building height requirements for the study area. And then you could almost then jump down to the paragraph below those two Arabic numeral paragraphs, and then say, any proposed development that seeks to exceed the zoning height limit would need to meet blah, blah, blah. And then you could also then incorporate, you've got some elements that they'd have to meet embodied within that paragraph, you could almost add one and two in there to things that people would have to think about doing, but I'd also, as I mentioned earlier, like to see one and two be applicable to any developer that comes into the, into the neighborhood with a potential project, because they'd all, they should all be thinking about these I think we learned tonight that people have concerns about traffic, significant concerns. There was an assertion made in one of the emails I saw, that the traffic is overcapacity at 50th and France, and we know from the study work that was done by SRF, that's not true. Everything operates at Level C. There are periods in the afternoon when the traffic is congested with PM peak commuter traffic, but on balance, we're, you know, that's, we're not overcapacity. I don't think parking will be a problem. I think we're going to make sure that as development occurs in 50th and France, we can satisfy the parking requirements. That's one of the things that we did with the expansion to the existing parking ramp, was to create more parking than we had before at 50th and France when the old middle ramp was still in existence. So I don't see us changing that philosophy, that parking's going to have to be adequate at 50th and France, so we don't get that neighborhood spillover. And I think Edie Rice was very gentle in her criticism of, you know, the, all the parking that goes on by construction workers on their street, day after day after day, and recognizes it as a short-term problem, and the city is working on that, and I think we're trying to figure out some solutions. Director Milner, I mean, you may have been involved in that, and I think Manager Neal's been involved in trying to figure out some short-term solution there. There was an assertion made in one of the emails, that the 100 dwelling units an acre is above the city average. Well, it's not, it's right, consistent with the code. And, and we, you know, they raised a concern about special setbacks over two floors, that's in the plan. Connectivity should not be considered to the north into White Oaks. I think our folks, as part of our team, have done an excellent job of explaining what they mean by connectivity, and doesn't have anything to do with that picture that appeared and disappeared as a possibility over the easement, or cutting through, or, you know, resulting in the taking out of a home. It has to do with the logical sort of connectivity we'd have in the neighborhood with respect to sidewalks and streets. And then I concur with my colleagues on the buffer strip, I think it's got to stay in the study area. So those are kind of the main points I wanted to raise. On balance, as I say again, I think this is a document that, for me, creates a lot of ability to think and manage individual projects, so that you get what's best for the district. We're really fortunate in our town, we got, we got two, two commercial areas, two downtowns in a way. We got our charming old quaint 50th and France downtown, and then we got this thriving commercial hub now out in the Southdale District. I mean, not too many towns can say they have those kinds of commercial activities going on, and there are commonalities to them, but they're also still very distinct. And we want to do things that maintain that charm and attractiveness of 50th and France. I think the study team has done a great job of recognizing what's there, we need to, we need to preserve and be consistent with what's there, but let's have a little latitude in the future about thinking about what's going to happen in the world of development, to be able to kind of move with things, so that we have some flexibility, just like they had in 1974, when somebody had this lightbulb idea of, oh, let's put the parking behind the retail, let's hide it back there. And it became European, you know, well, this is, you know, you saw the newspaper articles that this is Euro-style. Well, it was quite innovative for the time, and now we've moved on from there, now we're putting life on Market Street, old 49 and a half street, with the way things are being developed with Nolan Maines, and also with the retail on the, on the parking ramp side. I think all of that is going to speak well for the future of 50th and France. And there's a, you know, I was thinking a couple times as we were talking tonight about that old Yogi Berra-ism, nobody goes there anymore, there's too many people. People do go there, and there's a lot of people there, but people still keep coming there. We're in a little bit of a hiatus right now because of the construction. I think that some of our retail merchants have suffered, although others say that prosperity's never been better for them. So we're going to get through this next six months, in October, we're going to have Nolan Maines open, it's going to be a spectacular addition to the 50th and France neighborhood. Members Staunton and I spent a half an hour, 45 minutes, walking around there on Saturday, and looking at it from all different angles to see how it fit into the neighborhood, and I think we appreciate the developers, and we appreciate the wisdom of the council in saying, yeah, if you're going to have height down there, load it in the middle, and keep it away from the neighborhoods, and I think that's what we'll see happening in the future, too. So I've been convinced by what I've heard tonight, that the concerns of the residents are really embodied in the plan, except, I would say, on page 34, I think we need to do some work there. A member, Fisher, took a cut at it, but I would like to make sure that we're not, we're not extending an invitation to be over the height limit, but we are telling people that if you come to something, come to us with something that is over what's prescribed in the code, you better have a darn good reason for why we should think about going over the four-story height limit, and it better be a request in the right location and not close to the neighborhood. So those are the key points for me. I don't know how we go about adjusting some of these pages, anybody have any thoughts?
Could I make a motion?
Yeah, you sure can.
Mr. Mayor? So I would move that we approve the plan with two amendments. One being to modify the dwelling units per acre to whatever the number that Nolan Maines is. It's in the plan, they talk about 67, it might be 73, or whatever that number is. And then, secondly, that we adopt Member Fisher's recommended language on page 34 to clarify the situation where somebody comes in for additional height request.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that's a good compromise on the, on the DUA number. So we got a, we got a motion and a second to approve the small area plan with two amendments. One is to modify the dwelling unit per acre number for the district to be consistent with the Nolan Maines DUA number, whatever that is, and then, secondly, to adopt the recommended language expressed by Member Fisher on page 34.
And I see Director Teague looking anxious over there. I think Member Anderson's point about just create a new designation for that area, MXC-2, or whatever we want to call it, because it, we're, what we're suggesting is we untether it from what that designation is in the grandeur.
Yep, we can certainly do that. I just, if I could just ask for some clarification, so when the Nolan Maines project was approved, the density was 73 units an acre. When it came to construction, they reduced some of the units, so that's where we're getting that 67. So that's the discrepancy, so which...
Should we call it 75? I mean...
75 was what the comp plan was amended as part of that project?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Others as well?
Yes. Could I, Councilmember Brindle brought up something about the buffer. I think we all agree, it sounds like we all agree that the buffer should be in, but there were a few, maybe slight inconsistencies, so I think just promoting the idea, if there are some of those, just cleaning that up, so it's very clear what we're saying, I think would be a good thing.
I'd accept that as a housekeeping amendment, friendly amendment to the motion.
There are some minor edits that I'll provide, that aren't substantial, and don't change the document.
Okay. So now our motion is to adopt the small area plan as recommended by the small area plan study team, modified by the amendment which would set the dwelling units per acre number at 75, and the, we'd adopt the recommended language of Member Fisher with respect to changes on page 34.
And the tidying up.
And the housekeeping work that Member Brindle has done, if you can provide that as well to staff. So we've got a motion, and we've got a second. Everybody comfortable with all the motions described with the amendment? We need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you again. Thanks, members of our community, for coming over and helping provide guidance for the council. It was a great discussion, so we appreciate you being here. Ms. Picard and Mrs. Rice, thank you for your presentation. All right, the next matter in front of us is, in the reports and recommendations section, is Resolution 2019-28, accepting various donations. Is there a motion on that particular matter?
Second.
And a motion, and a second to adopt Resolution 2019-28, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Some significant donations in here, I don't know if Member Brindle or Member Staunton would want to talk about the Edina Crime Fund donation to the Arts Center, but it's certainly substantial, at $13,000.
Sure. So each year at the Fall into the Arts Festival, a portion, a good portion of the proceeds is donated to the city of Edina, and it is divided in half. Half of it goes to the Parks and Recreation Department for Centennial Lakes, they host the event, and the other half goes to the Edina Arts Center, and some of their staff help to organize the, organize the event. The director of the Arts Center is the chair of the event, and so, so this year, the proceeds that were donated to the city totaled $26,000, so they were divided in half, so $13,000 to each, the Edina Park and Rec and the Edina Arts Center.
And if I could just piggyback, and I'd ask Manager Neal to maybe summarize this for us, this particular one had to do with one of our officers who had an extraordinary opportunity in Washington DC at the FBI Academy.
With Mr. Tholen.
Yes.
Okay.
Because it looks like it was FBI Academy Flight Reimbursement was the, was the specific donation, and I thought this might be a good opportunity to just tell folks what a, what an accomplishment and a, and a sacrifice he made to, to do this.
That's right. So Brian Tholen, who's a lieutenant in our department, has just recently completed a 10-week, 10-week term, right, at the FBI National Academy, which is really quite an opportunity for a local police officer to be able to undertake. We've had a couple in our department be able to do it, Chief Nelson is one of them as well, but it also comes with considerable sacrifice. They're there for 10 weeks, and one of the, one of the benefits that they receive from the crime fund is reimbursement for a trip home to see their family. So we're very grateful for that, because it is considerable sacrifice, not only for, for the employee, our person who's at the academy, also for their family that are here, and also for their coworkers who are carrying a little extra burden, so it's helpful for this to happen.
And we had the good fortune of having dinner with Brian when we were out in DC. He was in his last, next-to-last week, and, and he had all kinds of great stories about what an amazing experience it was for him. So thank you to him, and to the crime fund, and it's a real feather in the cap of the department.
Good. All right. Onto correspondence petitions. Manager Neal, anything other than what was on the dais this evening?
Nothing more than what was on the dais in front of you tonight.
All right. And then aviation noise update, Member Brindle.
Thank you. I was out early this morning, listening to airplanes, not being facetious at all. So I was on Concord Terrace, and when departures leave MSP on runway 12, they tend to come right toward Concord Terrace. And when it's busy, particularly on mornings, they can have three planes a minute over their houses, and it gets a little, it's, it's like, you know, they go, can we have some relief here? So that's, that's where that neighborhood is, is, is looking at, you know, noise, 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 and in the summertime, when it happens, they, they go inside. So it's when the winds are northwest, southwest, or west, that they, the planes fly into the wind, and so, so when that happens, then this is the direction they're flying. So that's where I was this morning, and thank you to Jennifer Lewis from the MAC, who met me over there, and provided some great detail for the resident we spoke with. And the next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee will be May 15, 1:30 in the afternoon at the MAC location on 28th Avenue, and then community learning sessions. The next community learning session will be Wednesday evening, April 24, 7:00 PM, at Mendota Heights City Hall. If that date is convenient, folks can feel free to go over there. We are working on planning a listening session for, to take place in the city of Edina in the last week of July. So when that date is finalized, we'll let everybody know.
But Manager Neal, anything else on that topic?
Nothing more, no, nothing more than that.
Member Anderson, you want to lead us off on council comments?
I wish I had something to share, but not tonight, but thank you for the opportunity.
That's the kind of leadership we wanted.
All right, thank you. So the Edina Transportation Commission has established a new working group, Traffic Demand Management, and this, TDM, is, is a policy, if you will. In Bloomington, it's an ordinance, in Eden Prairie, it's a requirement, and in Minnetonka, it's a policy that when a development comes in that is of a certain size or greater, it triggers TDM. And so that means that you have to study how the traffic is going to move in through and out of that development, and, and take note of different kinds of modes of transportation. So the, the group has had one meeting, they've asked me to advise them, so I, being a member of the 494 Corridor Commission, talked to members of those other cities, and talk about their traffic demand management plans, and so sharing some of that information with this committee. Melissa Madison, who is Executive Director of the 494 Corridor Commission, a staff member, was there, and she helps to write these TDM plans. So ultimately, if a plan is written for Edina, it would be written with the help of Melissa Madison. So, let's see. And a reminder that we are hosting a town hall meeting this Saturday morning at 10:00 at Braymore Golf Course.
All right.
So that's what I have.
Great. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me.
Ron Anderson has really started a trend here. Nothing to, sure, you started a trend.
I like that.
Member Fisher?
The only thing I would say is, I'm going to apologize in advance, I'm going to miss my first council meeting on April 16, and it was one of those issues where my, my work life and my council life have collided, and in this case, I have to be, it's a very important meeting I have to be at for my... my company, and, and I've talked to Manager Neal, and he's assured me that really, we don't have any huge issues on the agenda that we know of today. So, I'm hoping I can, it won't make any big difference for us, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to report on? No? Okay. For me, quickly, on March 26, we did State of the Community over again for both the Rotary Clubs at the morning meeting, and I think it was, it was a great audience, and I think they appreciated all the information about what's going on in, in the community. And then on last Friday morning, the 29th, I went over to Williams Arena to the sectional robotics meet, and met with the Edina team, and then saw some people that I knew from Green Bush, Middle River, where we have a, a great relationship with the kids up there, and, and Russ and Mary Anderson, who have relatives here, Wally Anderson. They said they're going to bring the kids back up to summer and teach them how to drive a combine, and, and get them their ATV licenses, and so they've got a wonderful relationship going with, with the group of kids up in, up in the northern, northwestern part of the state. I didn't, I wasn't able to stick around long enough to see how they did in their first match, but it was a, a kind of a fascinating setup, and it was, you were paired with, in an alliance with two other teams, you didn't know who you were going to get paired with, so I don't know who they got paired with or how the whole thing turned out, but they're just a first-rate bunch of kids and do a wonderful job representing our community. And then on Monday morning, I had breakfast with Matt Lewis, who's an Edina native, a young guy who's over at Greater MSP, and they're thinking of some, with Mike Langley retiring now and Peter Frosch taking over, they're thinking about some changes on some things, and I'll keep people posted on that. So, that's it for me. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two quick things. One is just a reminder that we have a big project coming up that's going to inconvenience a number of people. It's the France Avenue Bridge Closure. It's going to kick off on April 12, it's going to end the middle of July. We don't always know how these, these closures impact driving decisions, but the one thing I can guarantee you is you're going to hear about it. We don't know where they're going to go. We have some, Mr. Millner and I have some suspicions that it might be 60th Street over to Xerxes and over, but it could be over to Valley View. But just to let you know that we are working with Mendota, they have established some, some official detours, and they've done a lot of noticing for this project, but you will hear, you will hear from unhappy drivers, for sure. And I would say, Mr. Millner is also, they've notified the Waze group, or we're going to notify the Waze group of this change too, so it should affect other driving apps as well.
Well, I think we know that when the county did Penn, they all went to Xerxes, and when they did Xerxes, they went back to Penn or over to France. So I think you're, you're guessing right, that they're going to move to France.
We, we just don't...
You mean, they'll move to Valley View and they'll move to Penn?
We're, we just don't have very good options here about can we close off local streets so that only local people can use them, and we're going to hear that kind of thing, and we really just can't do that very well in this case, there aren't a lot of options about how to get to the other side of the crosstown from where they are. The final thing is to let you know that we, we have arrived at four semifinalists for our vacant Park and Rec Director position. The first round interviews are on Thursday, we hope to name some finalists by, by the end of the week, perhaps, and we have second round interviews scheduled for next week. So that process is moving forward. And that's all I've got.
All right, good, thank you. That prompt anything else from any other, from any of the council members? All right, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks for your good work.[1766.78][1766.78](APPLAUSE).[1767.78]